Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're ready.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I'm Jerry Cutrere, Chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Town of Hilton Head Board of Zoning Appeals, July 29, 2020. It's always been our practice to begin a meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, perhaps in these times more than ever we need to do it, so I'm providing a flag and ask you to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Adam, Secretary, are we in compliance with the law for you?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay. Our first order of business this morning is to swear in one of our reappointed board members. Mr. Gruber, I believe you're on the call and are going to take care of this item of business for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Walzak, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state
to exercise the duties of the office
to exercise the duties of the office
to which I have been appointed
to which I have been appointed
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof
and preserve, protect, and defend
and protect and defend, oh, and preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and of the United States
and of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir, so very much for your service to the town. It is truly and greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Charlie, congratulations. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walzak?
Present.
Mr. Cutrere?
Present.
Ms. Bryson?
Present.
Mr. White? Mr. White, if you would unmute on your end?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Loudermilk?
Present.
Dr. Ponder?
Present.
And I will note that Bob Johnson has an extrude absence today. Want to welcome everybody to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'll give a brief introduction in terms of our procedures. We have three cases that we will hear today, one variance and two appeals. In the variance, the town staff will have 20 minutes to make a presentation of facts and applicable principles. Following the staff's presentation, the applicant will have 10 minutes to present their facts. During both presentations, board members will have an opportunity either during or after the presentation to ask questions. Staff will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. Board members may then ask any additional questions they have. Members of the public will be offered an opportunity to submit comments, and at the conclusion of the public comment period, the board members will discuss the application. There will be a motion and a vote to the variance, approve the variance with conditions, modifications, or to deny the variance. Following that, the motion must at a minimum contain a finding of facts that the maker deems material to the decision, appropriate references to the relevant criteria of the LMO. Following the vote, the staff will prepare a written notice of action, setting forth a decision of the board. Notice of action will be sent to the applicant, and the decision of the board will be final upon the moment of the notice of action. Teresa, how are we going to handle signing the notice of action by the maker, secondor, and chairman?
Mr. Chairman, we can have it ready for you outside of Town Hall to come up and sign.
Okay.
And we'll let you, the motion maker in the second, we'll let you all know when that's ready.
Okay, thank you. We then have two appeals following the hearing of the variance, and in the case of an appeal, the applicant will speak first and have 20 minutes to present. The staff will then present for up to 20 minutes. If the appellant is someone other than the owner of the property, the owner of the property will have an opportunity to speak if they choose. Chairman will allow five minutes to each of the parties for rebuttal. The public comment is not permitted in cases involving appeals of staff determination. Following the presentations and the questions, the board will discuss and vote in a manner similar to variances. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do any members of the board have any changes to the agenda, or does the staff have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I could, in looking at the minutes from our last meeting, I was reminded that the board authorized the chair to write two letters, although I think it was done in one letter, to the Town Council and the Planning Commission about amendments to the LMO, and I think it'd be helpful for us to have a status report about that, perhaps under the staff report or under old business. So I would ask that we add that, just to know what the status of it is, to our agenda today.
Okay, I think we'll vote on the agenda, and then I'll ask Teresa to comment on that. Any other comments on the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Walzak, you look like you're dying to make a motion.
Oh, sure. I move we approve the agenda.
All right, thank you. We have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Walzak, second by Ms. Loudermilk. Any comment? Hearing none. Teresa, would you call the roll?
Mr. Walzak?
A present.
For the motion would be.
Oh, you called, oh, I'm sorry, because we certainly did say we're here already. Approve the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Cutrere?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Okay, the motion carries. The agenda is approved. Teresa, since it's been brought up now, would you comment on the answer to Ms. Bryson's question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The letter that you wrote has been sent to all of the BDA members. This was pre-pandemic, and pre-pandemic also, the Town Council and Planning Commission received a copy of the letter. Those amendments that the BDA is looking to do has been added to a future set of LMO amendments.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryson, any other questions regarding that?
No, sir. Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 27, 2020 meeting? Ms. Bryson?
So moved, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. White?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Bryson, second by White. Any discussion? Hearing none. All, Patsy, I'm sorry. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walzak?
For the motion.
Mr. Cutrere?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White? Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Okay, thank you. Minutes are approved. Citizen comments. Teresa, do we have any, well, let me back up. Members of the public were given an opportunity to comment on the meeting today, either by submitting electronic communication or by requesting to speak before the board. Teresa, we have, I believe, one comment that was received?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay, and it relates to the smokehouse?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll hold that until we move on to that one. We had three items, one variance and, I'm sorry, two variances in the appeal that requested postponements of their hearing before the BDA. The first was a variance submitted by Edward Pritchard relating to property at 15 Marshland Road. Second was a variance request by Mr. Schwamen relating to property at 13 Sandcastle Court. Fourth was an appeal by William Bowen on behalf of the Island Club III horizontal property regime. Under the authority granted under the rules of procedures, I have granted a 30-day, I'm sorry, a three-month postponement of those hearings, and we will hear them at a future date. So no action will be taken on those today. Our next item of business is election of officers for the July 1 to June 30 term. Would anyone care to make a motion for a board member to serve as chairman for the new term?
Sure, I would, I'd like to move that we make Jerry Kutter our chairman for the next season, next year.
Okay.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Any other, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll consider that vote by acclamation. Thank you for your confidence. Now we need a motion for a board member to serve as vice chair for the new term. Do we have a motion for someone from a member for a vice chair?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that Patsy Bryson serve as our vice chair for the coming year.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second that. This is John White.
Okay. Motion by Loudermilk, second by White. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll declare that vote by acclamation, and congratulations, Ms. Bryson. Now we'll move on to the first of the public hearings. Variants.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, do we need to renominate Teresa Haley as our secretary?
Thank you very much, thank you very much, yes.
Yes, sir.
We need a board secretary. I think we have a pretty qualified one, so we'll, Chair will ask for nomination for Teresa Haley to continue as secretary to the board for the new term.
Teresa Haley.
Ms. Bryson, I see you.
Yes, sir, I nominate Teresa Haley to serve as our board secretary with our thanks.
Motion by Bryson, second.
I will second that.
Second by Loudermilk. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare that Teresa is reelected as secretary by acclamation. Thank you for keeping me on track here, Patsy. Now we'll move to the public hearing. First is a variance 001076-2020, a variance request of Joe DePaul on behalf of Hog Mountain Holdings regarding property at 34 Palmetto Bay Road. And I believe that Tyler Newman will be making the presentation on behalf of this town. Ms. Newman, are you prepared to go forward?
Yes, sir, I am.
Oh, Mr., I'm sorry. Please proceed.
All right. Tyler Newman, Senior Planner. As previously stated, the applicant is Joe DePaul on behalf of Hog Mountain Holdings LLC. He is requesting a variance from LMO Section 16-5-102, setback standards for a proposed enclosed stair to encroach four feet into the required adjacent use setback. A little background on the variance on June 9, 2019, a fire broke out in the Smokehouse Restaurant. Since then, efforts have begun to reconstruct the building and improve the site. With regard to relation or involvement with the town in terms of these efforts to reconstruct the site, the applicant submitted a pre, or for a pre-application meeting in October 2019. During that meeting, the setbacks in question were provided. In February 2020, a waiver request was made for, there were several requests involved in that waiver, but one of the things that came out from that was that staff allowed a proposed open-sided stair with a roof to encroach up to three feet into the required 20-foot adjacent use setback from the adjacent property at 8 Archer Road. Then in April of 2020, they submitted, or a major development plan review was approved, which showed an open stair encroaching 2.15 feet into the adjacent use setback. After the approval of the major development plan review, during the review of the building permit, the town's plans examiner determined that the proposed stairs would be required to be enclosed for the building design to meet the life safety guidelines of the International Building Code. Per LMO Section 16-5-102E, enclosed stairs are not an allowable setback encroachment. The image shown is aerial of the property. The property is located at 34 Palmetto Bay Road. The proposed stairs are adjacent to the Red Fish Restaurant located at 8 Archer Road, which if you're looking at the current image from Palmetto Bay Road, 8 Archer is to the left. Here you'll see a photo of the original Smokehouse building, which did have extensive building from, or extensive damage from the fire that took place in June of 2019. The applicant is choosing to reuse the existing restaurant foundation to save construction costs for substantial damage repair and substantial damage improvement as defined by the National Flood Insurance Program. So here is a photo of the existing foundation that's currently on site. The image shown is what the applicant has prepared for the proposed enclosed stair, shown in green, to encroach four feet into the required adjacent use setback, which is 20 feet. And here is just a closer, zoomed-in image of that proposed stair encroachment. The applicant's grounds for variance include, per the applicant, that the proposed stairs will need to be enclosed for the overall building design to meet the life safety guidelines of the International Building Code. The applicant is choosing to reuse the existing building foundation, which in combination with the existing driveway entrance, parking lot layout, and narrow proportions of the property, leaves minimal width against the left adjacent use setback. Per the applicant, the variance is required in order to allow servers and patrons to comfortably pass each other within the proposed enclosed stairs. Criteria one, there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property. The subject property is approximately 1.52 acres. The subject property is larger than all six of the directly adjacent properties, other than 12 Archer Road, which is approximately 1.64 acres. The subject property is rectangular in shape, as are the majority of the adjacent properties. The subject property did have a fire breakout in June 2019 that caused significant damage to the existing building on site. Staff concludes that this application does not meet this criteria. While the building did receive significant damage due to a fire, the property itself does not have any extraordinary or exceptional conditions that pertain to it. Criteria two, these conditions do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity. There are no extraordinary or exceptional conditions that pertain to this property. The other properties in the vicinity are actually smaller than the property. None of the other properties in the vicinity have buildings that were significantly damaged from fire. Staff concludes that the application does not meet the criteria, as there are no extraordinary or exceptional conditions that apply to the subject property that do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity, other than that the building had a fire take place in June 2019. Criteria three, because of these conditions, the application of this ordinance to the particular piece of property would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. LMO Section 16-5-102D requires a 20-foot adjacent use setback for a commercial service use or restaurant to be adjacent to another commercial service use restaurant. So that's the Red Fish and Smokehouse. The applicant was made aware of all setback requirements during the pre-application meeting in October 2019. The applicant was granted a waiver for a covered open stairway to extend up to three feet into the adjacent use setback. The original development plan review was approved with an open stairway extending 2.15 feet into the adjacent use setback. When the applicant was informed that they needed to enclose the stair per the requirements of the International Building Code, they were able to revise the plans with an enclosed stairway meeting the setback requirements. And the image that is currently shown is an image of the approved plan from May 2020, which shows the required enclosed stair within the adjacent use setback, thus meeting the requirements of both the LMO and the International Building Code. And here is a closer, zoomed-in image of that approved plan as well, showing the enclosed stair within the adjacent use setback. Based off of these findings, staff concludes that this application does not meet the criteria. The applicant is able to redevelop the site meeting LMO requirements as proven by the approved plans. And here you'll see a comparison of the approved stair design versus what the applicant has proposed. Criteria number four, the authorization of this variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property or the public good, and the character of the zoning district where the property is located will not be harmed by the granting of the variance. Staff has received no letters of opposition to this variance request. Staff did receive one individual online comment stating that the request should be denied. However, there was no reason provided for why the application should be denied. Staff has received a letter of support from the owner and operator of the adjacent property restaurant located at 8 Archer Road, which contains the Red Fish Restaurant. While there is no buffer required between the two adjoining properties, there is an approximately 57-foot-wide wooded area that serves as a buffer between the Smokehouse property and the adjacent property located at 8 Archer Road. The proposed stair doesn't impact any adjacent properties other than 8 Archer Road. Here is an image showing the view to the Smokehouse from the Red Fish Restaurant at 8 Archer Road. And here is also an image from the Smokehouse showing the view of the vegetative buffer that exists between 34 Palmetto Bay Road and 8 Archer Road. Staff concludes that this application does meet this criteria. The proposed variance will not be a substantial detriment to the adjacent property or the public good. In conclusion, staff recommends that the BDA deny the application based off the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do any members of the board have a question for Mr. Newman? Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir, I'll make sure I'm unmuted. Okay. Yes, sir. My question for you is, it's difficult to tell from the document staff has just presented whether or not the proposed stairway is located within the existing slab or existing footprint of the building. It appears as though that's an addition to the building, and so that's what I want to know is, is the proposed stairway, whether it's enclosed or not, is that an addition to the building outside the existing slab or footprint?
I can't confirm whether or not it's within the exist, or whatever the existing slab was from the previous building. I do know that the design that's been proposed, and I believe the basis for the stair, is that they are now including a second story to the restaurant, a second-story bar area, and I believe that is the basis for the stair.
And how about the walk-in freezer refrigerated area? Do you know whether or not that is an addition to the footprint or existing slab?
That was actually a part of the waiver approval, was that there was an existing, there was existing foundation there for a walk-in freezer that was with the previous Smokehouse Restaurant. Part of the waiver approval was that we allowed them to replace the previous freezer with a new one, as long as it stayed within the same, or encroached the same amount into the adjacent use setback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll defer further questions about that to the applicant.
Okay. Dr. Ponder, any questions for Mr. Newman?
Just one. You draw our attention to certain exceptions, to the, certain allowable exceptions. Is there a reason why an open staircase of this type is not among those allowable exceptions?
Well, the proposed, the proposed stairway that's being requested for the variance is actually enclosed.
I'm sorry, enclosed. I apologize.
I can't attest to why that is excluded. The setback table in the land management ordinance only allows open stairways to encroach. I can't attest to why an enclosed stairway is not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Loudermilk, any questions?
Just, just one. The wooded buffer between this property and the Red Fish property, it stated that there is a portion, at least, of that buffer that is unbuildable. Is Is there or what official evidence exists that it's unbuildable? And if, in fact, that's the case, would this possibly render the property different or unique from neighboring properties?
So it appears that that was in the applicant's narrative that was provided. That's not an unbuildable area. There's no buffer requirement between the two properties currently.
All right. And again, maybe my question then is better directed to the applicant, as far as designation of unbuildable.
Yes, as far as the interpretation from the land management ordinance is concerned, there is no buffer requirement between the two restaurant uses.
All right. Thank you, Tyler.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. White, any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wildsack?
Yes, the only thing I have is the fact that the building is going to be larger than the old building, and that they're adding a second floor, I guess. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I believe that there was not a second-story bar on the original Smokehouse Building, which is now proposed with this new redevelopment.
And maybe this would be a question for the applicant, but since they're increasing the size of the building, they're putting a second story on there, and they want to use the existing foundation, you know, I would question whether the foundation is stable enough for that. Though, I mean, maybe that's all been taken care of in the design. But, you know, this would certainly be an opportunity to move the building, so that there would be no encroachment. You know, if they would just give up on the fact that there's an existing foundation there. So I'm just pointing that out, and maybe, again, that should be a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me circle back then to Ms. Bryson. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, sir, I do.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, I do. What were the total number of waivers already granted to the applicant by the staff?
They were granted five total waivers.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Bryson?
No, sir, thank you.
Tyler, can we go back in your presentation to where you showed the layout and color coding of the stairwell? You had two or three slums there.
Yes, sir. Does this one work for you?
I think one more back, please. Okay, explain to us again what this is in yellow.
So the yellow is enclosed stairs, and this is currently the approved plan set for the major development plan review associated with this project. So when the applicant was informed by building inspection staff that the stairs needed to be enclosed, they were, in fact, able to come up with a design that meets both the requirements of the International Building Code and the LMO, which this image demonstrates.
Okay, so this one works from the town's perspective?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now the next slide.
The next slide shows that approved stair compared to what the applicant is proposing, which their stair encroachment is shown in green.
Okay, where in the proposed stair design, you have the red line that goes through the stairwell, I assume that's the limit that they can build to. And am I correct? Are there five stairs there? It looks like, and below the red line? Is that all one stairwell?
Yeah, yes, sir. I believe that's what the applicant is going for, is the wider stair that allows them to have more room for additional people to be able to move through at once.
Okay, and the green part is what the town is proposing to disallow.
Correct.
Did I understand correctly that under the LMO, an open stairwell can encroach, but an enclosed stairwell cannot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Tyler Newman?
Mr. Chair, one more.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, one more. In looking at those two diagrams on Slide 15, it reminds me, I understand that one of the five waivers granted was for an existing walk-in cooler to encroach into the setback at about two feet, two inches. So is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it appears from the diagram shown on Slide 15 that the proposed stair design, in addition to adding width to the stairway, adds a platform to change the direction of the stairs. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Ponder?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to go back to the chairman's question, because I think the chairman and I were trying to get at the same thing. I'm trying to understand whether the allowable exception of an open stairwell staircase, as opposed to a closed staircase, is some sort of safety issue. Like, there must be a reason for this, and I'm trying to get at what that reason might be, because I think it's germane, but I don't quite understand why one is allowable, an allowable exception, and the other is not. And we simply have no answer for that?
So we were just having a brief discussion about, I think essentially it boils down to the fact that an enclosed stairway is more mass, more structure encroaching into the setback than just an open-air stairway with no enclosure around it.
Was it proposed to the design team or to the owners that if they simply did not enclose the stairwell, they'd be able to do it?
Yes, that was part of their waiver approval, or waiver that was granted to them, was for an open stair to encroach up to three feet into the, an open stair with a roof to encroach up to three feet into the adjacent use setback.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
But if I'm correct, they have to enclose the stairwell in order to comply with the International Building Code?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Newman before we go to the applicant? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Tyler. We may come back to you. Who is going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I will, Joe DePaul with Parker Design Group Architects.
Okay, Mr. DePaul.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could share my screen quickly. It's telling me, Tyler, that you need to stop sharing your screen. Or it doesn't let me. Everyone can see my screen now?
Yes. Yes.
Well, thank you all for gathering today to consider our four-foot encroachment request for the interior stair off the side of the Smokehouse Restaurant. As you are all aware, the project really originated after a fire at the restaurant back in June. This is an image of the fire. It got to the roof structure and really forced us to have to rebuild the building. The stair we're proposing happens to be at the same location that the meters were that were the source of the fire that you can see here. And I like this picture, because it shows how that buffer, the trees, the live oaks canopy here really begins to hide the upper elevation of the building massing in that fire. Now, it's a unique situation, because it is a fire loss, but we are in a flood zone. So we started by talking with the town floodplain manager about our options, and after doing some initial pricing on what it would take to floodproof and building entire building four and a half feet above the existing grade, and worked that out with a parking lot, or to floodproof the building so that it would resist floodwaters up to that same height. The cost was really astronomical, and we determined our best course of action would be to reuse the existing slab and some exterior walls to design a new building in its place and try to still capture the same spirit of the original Smokehouse Restaurant. We began by looking at the original interior footprint, which is highlighted here in orange. There's a front porch that was existing off of the front there that's not highlighted, a back porch here.
We can't hear you, Joe.
We can't hear you, Joe. Hi.
Can you hear him now?
Mr. Chair, is Ms. Haley still with us?
I think not. Hold on just a moment, she called me. Thought. Lucy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we lost connection on our end. If you wouldn't mind stopping the meeting for now.
Come back in?
Not yet. Our IT group is working on it right now. Are you all still going on with the meeting?
Well, we were until I saw you had called.
Okay, okay, thanks, Tyler. Yeah, if you could all just hang tight, keep yourselves muted, so that we don't miss anything for FOIA purposes, and we're going to try to get back and get connected.
Okay, so you want everybody to stay on but muted?
Yes, sir.
And you will somehow, you're going to call me back to tell us we're okay, or what?
Yes, I will either call you back on your number here, or I will through the meeting, hopefully, once we're back and connected, I will let you know that we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your patience.
Were you all able to hear that conversation?
Yes. Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, so what we're going to do, town has lost connection. If you would just mute yourself and hold on for a couple of minutes, and then Mr. DePaul will.
Okay.
Okay. Bye.
Jerry, couldn't we just do a five-minute recess or something?
Well, we'll consider ourselves in recess until the meeting is temporarily suspended, so call it what we want. Waiting on.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I can.
Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa.
Yes, I've got you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, and board members, applicants, thank you. We lost connection for just a moment, but we're back on, so we can go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, right. I think it might be helpful for staff to let us know where their connection dropped off, to make sure that the applicant's.
Betsy, we're getting lots of feedback from you. Teresa?
It's not from me. It's not on my end.
Generally, Mr. Chairman, if I might add, if we could all keep our microphones muted unless we are speaking, because what happens with the reverberation is, we're hearing not only the speaker, but we're hearing the speaker through other people's microphones as well.
Right, thank you. Teresa, can you tell us where you were, where we need to go back to? I want to start Mr. DePaul's entire presentation over.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is exactly where we left off. We finished with Mr. Newman's questions, and I believe you were beginning to ask the applicant to join us, and that's where we left off.
Okay, Mr. DePaul, if you can start over.
And again, everybody can see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you all for gathering today to consider our four-foot variance request for the enclosed stair on the side of the Smokehouse Restaurant. As you know, this project originated after a fire broke out in the restaurant June of last year. Really got to the interior structure of the building, and is leading us to need to rebuild the site. I like this image, because the new stair that we're talking about happens to be where that fire is glowing in the background there on the old building. As you can see here, the heavy wooded buffer between the two rounds and the live oak canopy that really begins to disguise the upper levels of that fire and the top of the old restaurant building. This was a unique case, because it was a fire loss, it was a fire loss in a flood zone. And so we needed to determine the best way to build back. We started working with the town floodplain manager to determine our options. And the flood zone is four and a half feet above the existing parking lot and local area. The initial plans we looked at to rebuild the restaurant and floodproof it up to that height, the cost really became astronomical. And so we determined that the best course of action would be to reuse the existing building slab and the back wall of the restaurant. Let us to look at the original interior footprint of the building, highlighted here in orange. There's also, was an existing front wooden porch in this area to the front, and a wood deck at the rear. We actually really liked, from a design standpoint, how the original footprint addresses the road. It gives us some architectural frontage on the street, allows for limited parking in the front, just really provides enough space to get parking along the side, which we are improving, and additional parking in the rear. Now, the 20-foot adjacent use setback is shown here with the orange dash line. There is not actually any vegetative buffer required between this property and the adjacent properties, as determined by use. The little bit of this orange footprint that you see that overlaps that setback is the existing walk-in refrigerator and freezer that we are reusing, and that was one of our waiver requests. The other waiver request was for the stair, and then of those five waiver requests that the town mentioned, the rest were for parking lot improvements dealing with slightly smaller-than-normal islands, landscape islands existing in the parking lot. So only really two of those waiver requests come from the building itself. So we took that original interior footprint and laid out the new restaurant design, which you can see here. This is the walk-in cooler at the top that butts out. And our original plan was to use the five-foot allowable encroachment for an exterior stairway to connect the upstairs open-air bar with the downstairs. This stairway is proposed as an addition to the existing slab, so we are doing that and the upstairs bar as part of Phase Two of the building. As we were going, we had designed a roof over that approved exterior stair, and we found out that that five-foot allowable encroachment is, while stated as for open balconies, fire escapes, and exterior stairways, was interpreted as being for exterior stairways without a roof. The roof element was important to us to keep stairs safe in rain and winter in the elements, and and so we applied for a variance request and were granted a three-foot encroachment for that stairway with a roof, which is consistent with the LMO's allowable encroachment for a roof overhang. I'd also like to point out the highlighted here, the existing fireplace is an element that we are keeping. That is a good reference in in photos of the site that you'll see for how that stair relates to the fireplace and then the street out to the left here, which runs parallel to the parking lot edge. This is a, the front elevation of that approved open staircase is viewed viewed from the street, and you can see how it's an extension of the open air bar roof here. And then a view of it from the left is viewed from the Red Fish Restaurant. One of the things we like about the the switchback stair, which which is this design, is that it connects the the top of the stairs to the same location as planned in the bottom of stairs, and that allows for easy access for patrons from the downstairs dining area to the upstairs dining area above. It brings people from downstairs out to the lawn underneath the live oak and towards the front of the building if there was an emergency egress need, and it allows the kitchen staff to utilize the service corridor, come out into the bar area, and go upstairs without entering the kitchen. Unfortunately, during the permit, building permit process, there were some determinations of the IBC that this approved stair really needed to be enclosed in order to provide a safe egress down from this, the open bar area. So all this area on the second floor is open, but we do need an enclosed stairway over here to direct, direct people down and out of the building. As town staff mentioned, we we developed, in order to get the building permit, a solution that meets the requirements of the IBC, but it is really not a solution for the restaurant, and it doesn't work for our needs. It is a straight-run stair, so the bottom of the stairs comes out further back on the site. We're actually having to relocate the freezer and walk-in cooler further back to the back of the site behind the kitchen. And and so if you were going to go upstairs to the upstairs dining, can't actually do that from the lower dining area here. This door is really just an exit as you're walking underneath this long straight-run stair. And and so patrons coming down or walking down this stair and coming out further back on the site and really disconnected from this lawn area underneath the live oak. It also prevents our waitstaff from using a service corridor as an access to the upstairs to serve and and leads them into the kitchen in order to gain access upstairs. And so really what we're asking for today is your approval to enclose the switch, the original switchback open stair design to allow us to have that functional use that we're really looking for. Because we've put walls around it and we don't have the open sides for a little extra elbow room, we we do need four feet to really make this plan work, so we're asking for a four-foot encroachment into the setback. It's a trapezoidal shape, so it's four feet in the front here and narrows down to two feet, two inches in the back. But you can see in this plan how that really functions in the same way as the original and provides easy access down from the upper bar down down to the lower areas below. These are our proposed elevations, so the the front elevation at the top here, we're proposing wire climbing trellis with jazz and vines on the front elevation, break up the front elevation, and then providing windows down to try to develop some of those visual connections that we would otherwise lose between the upstairs, indoor and outdoor area as you are traversing down the stair. Zooming out to the site level, you can see here, the the rectangle represents our switchback stair, and the highlighted area is the variance request portion with the dash line representing the setback. The, so that is 16 feet between the highlighted area and the property line and an additional 57 and a half feet of vegetative buffer and lagoon that runs along the side of the Red Fish Restaurant. This is, this lagoon is part of the drainage system that runs all through Arrow Road, so when the Arrow Road lagoon backs up, this is all part of that waterway system, and you know, in our opinion, is a permanent fixture. If somebody wanted to build here, you'd really have to solve drainage from our property and this property and the roadway down into the lagoon system, and and you know, this is really an element of that. So really heavily buffered with the trees along this area, as Tyler showed here. Then this is the image of the, from the Red Fish Restaurant to the original Smokehouse with that original red roof just poking through in minimal places. Again, a view from 278 looking towards the building after after the demolition. The fireplace here even already becoming to, already hidden behind the live oak canopy in front of the building, so you really don't even see the the top of the chimney. The stair would actually sit behind that and be further hidden by the trees and partially blocked from the massing of the the lower elements of the architecture in front. And again, going back to this image of the the fire, so you can see the the place where the the stair sits relative to the old building and and how that tree canopy affects it. Stepping out to the neighborhood scale, here is our property with our 20-foot setback and nice big lagoon wooded area buffer. The adjacent properties all are really built with buildings that come very close to the property line. We we know for sure from our survey that the two structures in the Village Exchange, these two buildings along our right property line are within five feet and and closer than four feet to the property line. And then, as you can see, as you go down the street, lots of other buildings built very close to the property line there and 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 not subject to 20-foot setback. Going back down to our site plan once again, the floor plan here with the variance, our variance request noted, and that nice big buffer area, you can actually see that from this view that the building is is slightly canted to the street, and so the stair is actually even more concealed around the corner of the building and the tree canopy as it wraps around the corner here. So given all this information, we feel our request does not pose a detriment to the adjacent properties, the public good, or or the neighborhood. Red Fish Restaurant immediately to the north has provided us a letter of support for our request, and that's our neighbor of greatest concern. In our minds, this lagoon and buffer really makes, and the distance between the two buildings really makes the encroachment unperceivable to the human eye. We think that the scale of the building and architecture add add to the character of the neighborhood, and we would request your support for our four-foot encroachment. And with that, I'd like to pass it to Jerry Leonard, who is the owner of Smokehouse, for a few words, if I could.
All right, everybody can hear me? Can you hear me? I want to thank everybody for for your service to the town, and I appreciate your consideration of this four-foot encroachment. Just a little history about the Smokehouse. If anybody hasn't been around here for the last 20 years, we started in 1999 in a location in the Caligny Beach parking lot. Not long after we signed the lease on that property, the town of Hilton had bought the property, and which we became a tenant of the town for the next 11 years. We did everything we can to petition our way into being included in the Celebration Park that's being built today, but that just never worked out, so we were kind of forced to find a new new location. So in 2009, this was a Sticky Fingers Restaurant that we thought would be a great opportunity for us to move to, and we were in business there from 2009 till the fire last June. Certainly a fire that I never really wanted to happen in my life. I never wanted to put me in front of a design review board, or architects, or variance meetings like this, but this is where we find ourselves today. The restaurant, we've been a a great member of the community for all these years. We've been part of all sorts of charitable events and organizations and donations. We have been a great tax collector for the town. Between the, you know, rent license fees and hospitality taxes, my records show that I've given, written checks to the town for the tune of $1.3 million since then. We had insurance on the property and fairly good insurance. The insurance, unfortunately, didn't cover so many things that that we're being forced to do in bringing this thing up to the the standards of the current LMO. We certainly didn't have insurance on an electric car charging station. We didn't have insurance on an additional parking lot, additional landscape. So so much is 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 still coming out of pocket beyond the insurance plane. This staircase, obviously, we want the staircase basically for function, and function in a restaurant is very important. The flow of food and drinks from upstairs to downstairs supplies, it is, the the long-run staircase just doesn't work out. It it falls into a kitchen design that we spent months laying out, and now we've got this kind of staircase splitting up. We'll move the walk-in coolers back, and it just, from a function standpoint, this straight-run staircase does not work for us as a restaurant. So, you know, we're looking to have some efficiency in this new design. The addition of the rooftop bar is just something we thought would be a great addition to the Hilton Head Restaurant scene, and we're looking forward to serving customers our great barbecue up there, and I appreciate your consideration this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We'll go into questions now. I have a couple for Mr. Leonard first. When you acquired the property in 2009, I know there was redesign and reconfiguration inside, but were there any substantive structural changes that were made in the building at that time?
Most, most of it was a facelift on the inside, and then, you know, the addition of the fireplace, the front deck, the structured roof that went over the front deck. We kind of threw stuff the entryway a little bit on that project, but most of the changes in 2009 construction were cosmetic.
And do you happen to know when the building was originally built?
This building has some history that, at one point, I saw some sort of phase, phase something study on the history of the building, because at one point, it housed some sort of petroleum warehousing, so they had they had to do some sort of phase one study or something. But the building itself, I believe, is one of the oldest buildings on the island that dates back to possibly even the 50s. But it's, so it's, it's been there for a while. When we exposed the, you know, all the slab that that is there right now, it looks like there were three different, three different stages of construction on that building by looking at the slab and and the materials in it.
Okay, thank you. Question from Mr. DePaul. You have a...
You have a...
Somebody needs to...
Somebody needs to mute.
Are we okay now?
Are we okay now?
Yeah. You have a...
You have a standard...
I'm getting a lot of feedback, or is everybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's Mr. DePaul. When he turned on his mic, we started with a little feedback, but I see he's muted himself, so we should be okay now.
Okay, thank you. We have a single-flight staircase that meets the requirements of the town's LMO, but it's my understanding that in order to accomplish that, you need to move the freezer in the walk-in storage area. And you are required to enclose the staircase to comply with the International Building Code. If you didn't have to do that, you could leave it as an open staircase and satisfy the town's requirement, which permits an encroachment by an open-air staircase. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is really the IBC that is driving the conversation and forcing us to enclose the stairway. Otherwise, we were perfectly happy with our three-foot encroachment there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on with, if you would mute, Mr. DePaul. We'll go on with questions now from the other board members. We'll start with Mr. Welzak.
Okay, I'd like to just go back way to the be, beginning after the fire, and and I'm glad, Mr. Leonard, you brought up about insurance, because I'm a little familiar with fire losses and stuff, and normally, insurance companies will include a provision where they will pay for any additional improvements that are necessary to restore your building because of code changes. Did you run into that, or is it, was it your policy didn't cover those things?
I do have a clause in the policy, but then the limit on that particular portion is only $10,000.
Oh, okay. All right, fine, I I get it. That's it, that's all I had. I just wanted to, you know, I was concerned about, well, here's an opportunity to, you know, really change the building if you wanted to, and and but apparently, that's not going to happen with only 10 grand.
Any other question? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir, I'll unmute myself for this. Mr. DePaulo, is that right? I'm sorry, the architect's name, last name? Anyhow, yes, sir. My question for the staff was about whether or not the proposed stairway is included on the existing or the original slab or footprint of the building, and it appears as though, if I understood your testimony, that the freezer walk-in area is within that original footprint or slab, with exception of a waiver of a little over two feet for a portion of it. So my question for you is, is the proposed stairway outside of the existing footprint or slab?
The answer to that is yes. The FEMA, FEMA requires that when you rebuild a project, if you're, you know, building it over the existing slab, that we stay over the existing slab for Phase One. The stairwell, the stair and the upstairs bar are part of Phase Two. After we close out the Phase One construction, the restaurant will be considered rebuilt, and we're allowed to add on to that footprint.
And my next question... My next question... Sorry, I think you'll have to go off, you'll have to mute, and I'll try to be quick so you can come back on. The next question has to do with the the structure itself of the proposed stairway. If it were not enclosed, would there be a different foundation or exterior walls compared to an enclosed stairway? And now I'll mute.
So the unenclosed stairway design used steel columns to support the stair and the roof. When we enclose the stairway, we're really building wood walls around that, but the foundation is the same. foundation is the same. And those elevations are here. So you can see that instead of steel columns supporting a roof, we have wood franged walls going up, but it all fits over the same rectangular foundation.
So you're adding...
Adding footings in both cases?
In both cases, we are adding a rectangular slab of concrete foundation that is the same footprint as the stair itself.
Thank you, that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. White, any questions?
Not necessarily a question, as much as a statement to Mr. DePaul. So an open stairwell would be acceptable to the town, but in conflict with the IBC. To be in, to be accepted by IBC, you would have to enclose it, which is not acceptable in the LMO. Is that basically what I'm taking away?
That is correct. For the IBC, we'd like to see the stairway enclosed to provide additional life safety, basically to create a box that is more fireproof than the open sided structure would be. The, I guess, the idea is that the open sided structure would be threatened by flames from the burning building around it.
Right.
So we're being asked to enclose it. The LMO allows, have a five-foot allowable setback encroachment that is for open balconies, fire escapes, or exterior stairways.
So the, the straight run stairwell will have, will be, will have to cause a change in the kitchen area, correct?
That is correct. The straight run stair forces all of our waitstaff to use the kitchen area, walking past all of the cooking and prep areas in order to go upstairs to serve the second floor.
Has there been a determination?
Sorry, you broke up during your question.
So it dramatically affects the efficiency of the waitstaff and serving. Is there a cost? Have you been able to determine the cost of that? If you move the coolers and so on and so forth?
Yes, I mean, the coolers in the existing plan are over an existing cooler slab. As we shift them for this plan, we will need to likely redo some slab work underneath those to provide a better location for that. So there is foundation cost in moving the walk-in cooler and freezer involved as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Loudermilk?
Can I join in for one moment?
Certainly.
You know, I mean, in order to service the restaurant, we've got large food trucks that show up with, you know, hundreds of cases of groceries, you know, three times a week. To take our deliveries through that second door there and where the deliveries come into the kitchen is very inefficient for how we operate. The way that what the deliveries always came in is basically exactly where that door was located. So it not only doesn't affect our daily operations in terms of serving food to the patrons, but also affects the way we receive our goods. And just to clarify, I think this hasn't been brought up yet. The reason why we have to have two enclosed staircases is because the staircase in the main atrium is considered the exterior, even though it's inside an enclosed structure. So that's part of the, that doesn't really make too much sense, but that's why we have to enclose the second staircase per the International Building Code. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Loudermilk, any questions?
No, I don't at this time.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Ponder?
I have no questions right now. Thank you.
The board members at this time have any other questions for the applicant? If not, does the town wish to take advantage of its five minutes for rebuttal?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. As published, there is an opportunity for the public to call in with any comments.
I was about to go to that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are we allowed to ask another question of the town?
I believe that Mr. Newman, when he made his presentation, said that we got one written comment from the public and that was in opposition to this request. And that there were no telephone, no request to speak by telephone. Is that correct, Teresa?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, so we have heard our, we've had the advantage of the hearing from the public in terms of the written comment that was submitted. Now we'll go back to you, Dr. Ponder. You had a question for staff?
It's a general question. What exactly is the harm, if any, of allowing the staircase? Does it set that precedent? Is it in some way, I really want to understand the harm that would come from allowing the staircase in staff's opinion, which I take very seriously.
Mr. Newman, do you have a comment or response?
I think in the end, it just boils down to it is a larger encroachment into the setback than the, than the uses that, or I mean, than the structures that are allowed, like the open air stair. It's just contrary to what is currently established in the LMO.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I should have declared then the public comment period closed. I'll do so now. We're at the point in the meeting where the board discusses the variance and then we lead up to a, to a motion and a vote. I'll start off by suggesting that it strikes me that there really is an extraordinary circumstance If I'm reading the facts that I've heard correctly, we had a building, a business operation that was in compliance with all of the town's requirements. A fire caused the need to rebuild and bring the building to code. There is a requirement for a stairwell that can meet the town's LMO requirement, but doesn't meet the International Building Code requirement. And to comply only with the town's LMO imposes some significant additional costs. While what I'm about to say doesn't impact this specific application, I'm concerned about some things that are going on in our community in recent months. And here we've seen a number of significant employers in the restaurant leave our community. Bonefish Restaurant, Carrabba's have closed and left Hilton Head. Outback Steakhouse has been gone for some time. Pizza Hut and IHOP are closed. And we seem to have a situation here where an owner is trying to rebuild a building and do the right thing, but is getting hung up on technicality in the LMO where if the stairwell could be open air, it would meet the encroachment exception, but because it's not, it doesn't, and yet it has to be enclosed in order to comply with the International Building Code. I guess my thinking is that we perhaps do have an extraordinary and exceptional condition relating to this particular application, but I'd like to hear from other members of the board. So I'll start in the other order this time and Dr. Ponder, put you on the hot seat and see if you have any comments you'd like to make relating to the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with your comments wholeheartedly. And I also think that in this case, there would be material restriction to the utilization of the property if, if the staircase has to become a straight line and the kitchen moves. And then this other point that Mr. Leonard has brought up about actually bringing supplies into the building. I think the waitstaff not being able to go up and down easily, not being able to unload trucks easily, I do think that there's a material restriction on how the property can be used. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Loudermilk?
Yeah, I too am in agreement with the comments just made. I think particularly, again, the extraordinary conditions. I think the fire precipitated, you know, the consideration of the extraordinary conditions. But I also think, and I think it may have been Mr. DePaul, in Mr. DePaul's comments, you know, this is an older property on Palmetto Bay Road, which is one of our commercial zones, I think, that has, you know, struggled with kind of what should it be right now? And if every property on that road had a situation that caused it to rebuild, the likelihood that many or any of them would conform to the current LMO and building code requirements, I think, you know, is very slim. So I really do think the property, by nature of the historic changes within the town, within the zoning, within the building codes, exacerbated by the fire, I definitely think we have extraordinary conditions here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. White, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm going to mirror just what everybody else has said. This is, in my opinion, a unique situation. We have a longtime owner who's trying to reestablish his business and he's caught in a conflict. And the conflict is between the LMO and the IBC.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. I'm very sympathetic with Mr. Leonard and his position. Terrible thing, the fire and the loss of the business during this time and so fully supportive of local businesses. My trouble is with the number of waivers already granted and also with encroachments into setbacks, especially where their physical structures encroaching into a setback. I wish that there were another design option for this. I do like the design of the stairs that have a platform or wire and go the opposite direction. I certainly understand how that helps traffic flow. But due to the number of waivers and encroachment into a setback, I would not be supportive of granting this variance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Welzack?
I don't see this as a major issue. I don't know when the LMO determined there was a, should be a 20-foot setback here. I mean, for example, why couldn't it be a 15-foot setback? And the question that was brought up about, I think, I think, John, I think you brought it up, or I forget who, but, you know, what's the harm? What's the harm here? Is there any harm of having only 16 feet now instead of 20? And I don't see that harm. So I'm in favor of granting the variance here.
Anyone else from the board wish to make any comment? If not, it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion. Teresa has circulated to you the motion templates. And we have four criteria that need to be addressed, whether or not they're extraordinary and exceptional conditions, whether these conditions do not generally apply to other properties, whether the application of the ordinance effectively prohibits or unreasonably restricts the utilization of the property, and whether this variance would be a detriment to adjacent property owners. Does anyone care to make a motion? We can, if you like, take a couple of minutes recess while someone prepares their thoughts. Is anyone prepared to offer a motion on this variance? Dr. Ponder?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the application based on those findings of facts and conclusions of law found in... Wait a minute. Did I do that incorrectly, sir?
You did, I think.
I did, I did that incorrectly, sir.
Staff has concluded that there were no... Go ahead.
Should I try again, sir?
Yes, please proceed.
I'm sorry. I apologize to our, to our guests and the public if they're listening. I'll try this again. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Zoning Appeals disapprove the application. No, I've done it again.
You want to, you want to, I believe what you're wanting to do is move to approve the application, but you want to come up with some different...
Conditions.
Right.
I think the way it's supposed to be is the subject to conditions of approval. And then you listen.
Okay, you have the floor, Ms. Ponder.
Oh, gosh. Once again, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the application subject to conditions of approval. I think that we found in this case that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property because of the fire and other circumstances and the history of this property. I think we've also found that these conditions, for instance, the fire, do not generally apply to other properties in the vicinity, although some of the historic conditions might. I think we've also found that because of these conditions, the application of the ordinance to the particular piece of property would likely effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. For instance, the effective use of a staircase by waitstaff and by patrons and also the use of the entrances for delivery of supplies, et cetera. I think we've also found that the authorization of the variance would not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties or to the public good or the character... Or the character of the zoning district where the property is located. Nothing would be harmed by the granting of the variance. Under those circumstances. Though moved.
All right.
I would second the motion.
Motion by Ponder, second by Loudermilk. Any discussion among the board? Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walzak?
In favor of the motion.
Mr. Cattrier?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
Against the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Okay, on a vote of, I believe. Five to one, is it?
Yes, sir.
The motion carries. Mr. DePaul, Mr. Leonard, thank you. Your variance has been approved. That concludes the session.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a great day.
Have a great day.
Thank you all. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now 10:31. We've been at it for an hour and a half. We have two. Appeals to hear. Would the board members like to take a couple of minutes recess? And then. Come back in a few minutes? Are you ready to move forward?
Recession.
Five minutes.
All right.
Five minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to alert you all that we will still be live streaming during the recess. So if you would like to mute yourselves, that'd be great.
Okay, when everybody. When I see all of us back on screen, we'll reconvene the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to apologize for taking so long to get the motion right. I will work on that.
That's okay. You did fine. It's not easy coming up with the right language all on an extemporaneous basis. I've done it before and I know it's hard. So. We made it through fine. I think we did the right thing. And thank you for having the courage to step up and make the motion.
Question, Jerry.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Those that make the motion and second the motion are going to have to sign paperwork. Maybe staff could tell us how to do that? Or is it going to be done electronically or what?
No, we discussed that a little bit at the beginning. We'll try to help me remember to cover it at the end. What I think Teresa said, they would. Have the information or the document prepared and call. The parties that need to sign and you would. Come by Town Hall, they would bring it out to you.
Okay.
All right. I believe everybody is now back. So at 10:38 AM, we'll reconvene the meeting of the. Board of Zoning Appeals. Our next item is to hear. Appeals 001105-2020. Jason Bullock on behalf of E-Ride LLC is appealing staff's. Determination that Mokes and Scuzas are classified as auto rentals and sales. And are not permitted at 59B New Orleans Road in the Seapine Circle zoning district. To remind everyone of the process or the procedure we follow in an appeal hearing. The appellant will be given 20 minutes to present. Facts and arguments. Relating to the appeal. Staff will then have 20 minutes to speak. And at the end of that. If someone other than the property owner. Is the appellant, the property owner, if they wish, has an opportunity to speak. No public comment is permitted during a appeal hearing. And then following the presentations, the board members may ask additional questions. Then we'll have a discussion and a motion to either. Affirm the action of the administrator, modify the action. Reverse the action. Or remand the action to the administrator. Or further proceedings as the board may deem appropriate. I believe that Jason Bullock is going to be speaking on behalf of the appellant here. Mr. Bullock, I think I saw that you were on. So. You have the floor. Please proceed.
Good morning. Thank you all for your time. I never thought I'd be before the Board of Zoning Appeals once in my life, and now it's twice in one year. So it's kind of nice to see you all again under these unique circumstances. So we are here today to talk about something significantly more fun, hopefully than stairways and encroachments and the rest of those things. We are here to talk about. A new line of business on the island and some new products on the island. My Moke and Scusa. So a Moke you can see is the four-wheel vehicle to the left and a Scusa is the two-wheel moped to the right.
And the purpose of our. Mr. Bullock, your presentation is not on the screen.
Not sharing?
Not sharing.
No. Says I'm sharing.
Teresa, are you all getting that at Town Hall?
Mr. Chairman, we are not.
Okay, well, let's proceed. Proceed with a verbal description then, please.
Well, no, verbal description is no good because you need to see them to understand what they are. Hold on one second. Let me see if I can get it to come up on a different computer. Is this coming through?
No, we're not seeing it.
It's showing on Facebook.
It is showing on Facebook?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, for some reason it's showing on our Facebook Live page. And it disappeared. Nope.
Okay, Mr. Walzak.
No, that's not my page. But, okay, so Teresa, do you want me to email it to you?
Yes, that would be great. Is it a large file?
I'm going to send it to you as a PDF, which will compress it.
Thank you.
Because I'm sharing. Teresa Haley at Hilton Head Islands, South Carolina.
It's Teresa H.T.E.R.E.S.A.H.
Yes, yeah. It's on the way to you now. Still nothing on the screen.
Mr. Bullock, I do have your presentation, so if you could stop sharing on your end.
Wait one second.
Hit stop.
Did he get a request to share from me?
Yeah, I just did.
Hit that, please.
Okay, we think it may be a setting on your end, so our IT person is asking to take over your screen.
Did he accept that?
Did you accept that?
I did. Where do I need to go in the system preferences?
Under setting?
Files and folders.
I don't know. It didn't, that didn't, he accepted it and didn't. Sorry, my request was denied. Go ahead and check.
Okay, we're going to just share on the town's end. Is that all right, Mr. Bullock?
Sure. That's perfectly fine. Yes, that's correct. That's a Scusa.
Mr. Chairman, we apologize. We're sharing on our end, but it seems to be sharing on our Facebook Live page, but not our Blue Jeans application. So you'll just give us a moment to try to work through this.
Okay, we'll be standing by.
Thank you.
And when Teresa was kind enough to do my training, we were sharing just fine.
Mr. Bullock, I'll leave it up to you. You can have it either way. You could either. Proceed with your presentation. And then hopefully we can see. The two items during that time, or you can wait until they come up on the screen. I'll leave it up to you.
Or if you'd like me to yield for the second appellant and go after them, I'd be fine with that as well.
That's a thought. Is. Mr. McNeil? On at this time?
Mr. Cattrier?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion? If. If the appellant can. Can give us a specific website. So that we would all be looking at the exact same photograph on a webpage. We could do it that way. Because I actually looked these things up already, so I know what they look like.
There's some comparing and contrasting to other things that are actually built into the presentation. So it's kind of, there's a lot of what is and what isn't and getting to how you define other.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, let me, let me hear from Teresa.
Mr. Chairman. If I may, share the PDF that Mr. Bullock has shared with me. I can forward that off to the board right now.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just forward that on. So you all should be receiving now.
As an email, correct?
Yes. You could also.
Ms. Bryson, you have raised your hand to make a comment. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, that's okay. I was just going to suggest we check in with the town to see where they were before we go to the next applicant. But it sounds like that's what we're doing, so I'm good. Thank you.
To Teresa, should I go back to sharing my screen as I go through it so the Facebook Live feed is correct?
Yes, if you'd like.
Jerry, I. Got the email and I have it up on my screen. Oh, there it is.
Okay, we got it.
Got it.
Mr. Bullock, we have a page coming up that says BZA Appeal Classification of Moke and Scusa.
That is correct.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, so back to this. So we're talking about something slightly more fun and enjoyable than stairways and encroachments. We're talking about alternate forms of transportation on Hilton Head, Moke and Scusa. The purpose of our appeal today is town staff classifies Moke low-speed vehicles and Scusa electric mopeds as auto rental and auto sales. Auto rental and auto sales are not allowed in the Seapine Circle District unless they are co-located with a resort accommodation. My supposition is that's for a Hertz that's in a hotel lobby, the reason why it's written that way. We don't agree that they are actually autos and believe that they're better classified as other commercial services, which is allowed in the Seapine Circle District. So first of all, what are Moke and Scusa? A Moke is an electric low-speed vehicle that is capable of traveling 25 miles an hour with a 40-mile range. It seats four people that are facing forward and wearing seat belts. It recharges in eight hours plugged into a standard 110 outlet, so it's not like a Tesla that requires a special charging system or other automobile, electric automobiles. And by South Carolina Code of Laws, it titles as a low-speed vehicle. And it is specific in that Code of Laws, and we'll look at that in a little bit, that it is a very different process than that of automobiles or golf carts. And by law and by South Carolina Code of Laws, it's allowed to travel on any South Carolina roadway that is 35 miles per hour or less in speed, and it's allowed to cross any roadway up to 45 miles an hour. A Scusa is an electric moped that's capable of traveling either 20 or 28 miles per hour with a 35-mile range. It may be able to control the speed based upon the key type that the rider is given. So you give them a key that allows them to go up to 20 miles an hour, or you give them a key that allows them to go up to 28 miles an hour. There's only one seat, so it's just one rider with no passengers. It also recharges without any special charging stations on a standard 110 outlet. It is self-balancing with a low center of gravity, and by South Carolina Code of Laws, it defines as a moped, not a motorcycle. And there are no special license endorsements that are required to be able to ride one. So what is our vision for Moke and Scusa on Hilton Head? Mainly, we want to provide environmentally friendly five-star experiences. We think that Hilton Head is lacking in high-end social media post-worthy experiences, and we want to do something opposite. We don't want to be driving towards the lowest-priced thing or the most coupon or the least price. We want to provide some unique items to the public, be it the tourists or the locals on Hilton Head. And Moke and Scusa are internationally known high-end brands, and most important, there's no engine noise or exhaust fumes with them since they are all electric. We are the exclusive source for Moke in South Carolina and Georgia. We are by contract the only ones who can sell those items in the two states. And then for Scusa, we're the exclusive source in Chatham County, Georgia, Jasper, Beaufort, Collinston, and Charleston Counties in South Carolina. So that means that no other companies can sell or rent these items on Hilton Head. We are the only ones for these two items. So who loves Moke? Martha Stewart loves Moke. Joe Jonas and Sophie Turner love Moke. Jay Leno and his wife love Moke. A nice family from North Carolina that stopped me while driving around the North Forest Beach loves Moke. My neighbor Lamar loves Moke. He stopped me to take one from me one day. My kids and their friends love going for a ride in them. And to Dr. Ponder, my dog loves Moke. And there's one common thread amongst all these different people who are in these pictures, I guess except for the dog and Joe Jonas and Sophie Turner because they have the masks on, but they're all smiling. It's all a really funny experience and a unique experience to be riding in these. So who loves Scusa? Wonder Woman loves Scusa. People wanting to have a fun way to get around love Scusa. And the thing that I think is most unique about these items is socially-distanced golfers love Scusa. You can add an attachment to the back of these to allow for a single-person golf cart, and I think that they're going to revolutionize the way that people enjoy golf. Be it people of all generations, it's going to change the way that one can enjoy the game of golf, and it also helps in these times of needing to have one person per cart. So why is Moke better than a golf cart? There are four seats that face forward versus two seats facing backwards and two seats facing forward in a golf cart. A Moke by law has to have seat belts, whereas a golf cart does not. In the Moke, you're sitting inside of it with substantial side structure, but in a golf cart, your legs and feet can hang and dangle out. It has a much wider wheelbase with a low center of gravity, whereas golf clubs easily tip. A Moke has a 25 mile per hour max speed versus a golf cart 17 mile per hour max speed. And 25 miles an hour is a very nice speed on Hilton Head roadways. Pope Avenue is 30 miles an hour. Most of the neighborhoods are 25 and some of them lower. So having that extra eight miles an hour helps it travel at the speed of travel, but it also then keeps it within the speed limits in the various areas. Moke has a tempered glass windshield, whereas a golf cart has a plastic folding windshield. It has side and center mirrors and even has a backup camera. And it also has a full array of lights that are running lights, high beams, turn signals, whereas by South Carolina Code, a golf cart does not have to have head and taillights unless it is specifically equipped to operate at night. And the difference in how people sit on a golf cart versus how you have to sit in a Moke can be seen in these two photos. In a Moke, you've got four specific seats with four specific seat belts. On a golf cart, you can have people hanging off of them with their feet dangling and hanging out all. And they're also much more stable of a ride and prevent tipping. So why is a Scusa better than an electric bike? A Scusa has to have headlights and taillights, whereas an electric bike does not. Scusa is self-balancing with wide wheels, whereas a bike will fall over. Scusa has to by law in South Carolina have mirrors which will be added, and that can limit the speed of a Scusa, whereas an electric bike, you cannot limit the speed. And those differences can be seen in these photos with the Scusa's bright front headlight with no lights on the electric bike and its bright taillight versus a little tiny light on that electric bike. So why are we here? On March 29th, we applied for a business license to operate out of 59 New Orleans. If you aren't familiar with what that location is, that is the old radio station that's beside the Fountain Center. On the 2nd of April, we were asked to supply some additional information, and we were told to expect about two weeks to get the business license due to COVID and the fact that it was a different kind of business. And then throughout April, I sent a few requests asking where we were, and they sent some requests for additional information. And then on April 23rd, Terry was kind enough to email that she could approve the business license at 59 New Orleans if the items were stored inside. There was no mention at that time of classifying the business as auto rentals or auto sales. And we responded with the honest truth that Moke were too big to come inside of the building so that they would be outside, but the Scusa would be stored inside. Then a couple days later, I get a letter that the town wrote to an unrelated party in 2017 that golf carts are classified as auto rentals and that she was likely to do the same for Moke. We then had some discussions back and forth, and that led to then a 5th of May discussion with the staff attorney about Moke and Scusa details, where we talked through and explained the differences of how they are different from automobiles and golf carts and motorcycles. But Mr. Ryan's concerns weren't about the classification. He was mainly concerned that they were approved to be on South Carolina roadways, which Moke and Scusa are. Then we were asked to submit our initial inventory details of what would be stored at 59 New Orleans. And in early May, we had multiple emails back and forth about how to classify it. We continued to respond that it is other commercial services since they are a different kind of thing and don't fit into the current LMO classifications. But then finally, on May 15th, we received our final determination letter and were able to start the appeal process. But we again requested that the town reconsider. The town reconsidered for a couple weeks, came back and said that, no, we're going to stay with the determination letter, but staff will be pursuing adding an LMO amendment to this year's amendment list that would allow for a new classification to be created for low-speed recreational vehicles as an allowable use in the LMO. Using that it to be allowed in various districts, including the Seapine Circle District where we're looking to operate. So why do we like this building? What is it that we like about 59 New Orleans? Because as we know from the last time we were together, I have operations that are in the light commercial district. So we like 59 New Orleans because it's a quiet location with a large parking lot, and we only have limited walk-up business at this location for our commonly-owned bike business. Whereas in our other facilities in the light commercial district, they are very heavily trafficked by our bike delivery vehicles. For the safety of our customers, we do not allow any walk-up business at those locations, and we have people when they call wanting to come see us, come to see us at our 612 William Hilton Parkway or 59 New Orleans location, not our light commercial district area because we don't want to risk there possibly getting hit or injured by a vehicle. And for our 612 William Hilton Parkway location, we're not able to use it due to the speed limit. 278 speed limit at that section is 45 miles per hour, which means that a Moke is not allowed to drive in that part of 278. So as we consider this appeal, it's really important to consider the definitions of the different words that are a part of it. So according to South Carolina Motor Vehicle Code, which the paragraphs are contained in the letter that you have in your packets, so you can go to those different websites. But here's a summation. An automobile is actually not defined in the South Carolina Motor Vehicle Code. A light truck is also not defined in the vehicle code. It does define a motor vehicle as every vehicle which is self-propelled and every vehicle which is propelled by electric power from overhead trolley wires but not operated upon rails, which makes me think it's been a really long time since South Carolina looked at their definitions of vehicles because I don't know of any electric buses still running around in South Carolina. For a motorcycle, it's every vehicle having two or more wheels and a saddle to sit on, but it excludes a tractor and a moped. So a moped is specifically excluded from being a motorcycle. A moped is a cycle with or without pedals that allow a person to pedal it, can be powered by gasoline, electricity, alternative fuel, or hybrid. And the most important part is the engine or fuel source cannot be over 50 cubic centimeters or an electric input must be more than 750 watts and no more than 1,500 watts. So a Scusa's max output is 1,500 watts. So by definition and by South Carolina Vehicle Code, a Scusa is a moped, not a motorcycle. So now we need to talk about golf carts because the vehicle code spends a long time actually talking about what a golf cart is and how to properly license it. So an individual or business can get a permit decal, and I don't know who else here has a golf cart, but I have a golf cart too, and you get the little blue stickers that go on the side of it. You get the little blue sticker decal that is then registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles and placed upon the golf cart. A golf cart is only allowed to be operated within four miles of the registered address. And it too can travel on roadways that are 35 miles an hour. The golf cart permit must be replaced every five years, and the permit holder changes its address. And a municipality such as the Barrier Island of Hilton Head may allow for golf carts to be operated at night, but if you are operating your golf cart at night, you must have headlights and rear lights. But if you're only operating the golf cart during the day, it does not have to have headlights and taillights. Furthermore, a golf cart is not required to meet the same federal standards that a low-speed vehicle does, and that is Vehicle Safety Standard 500 of Part 49, yada yada, of the CFR. So that means that a golf cart cannot operate over 19 miles per hour and is not required to have seat belts or other safety vehicles. So therefore, a golf cart is not a low-speed vehicle, and therefore, a Moke is a low-speed vehicle and not a golf cart. So now, what is a low-speed vehicle? It's a four-wheeled vehicle other than an ATV that is able to travel at least 20 miles an hour and not more than 25 miles an hour, who has a gross vehicle weight of less than 3,000 pounds. So Moke's max speed is 25 miles per hour. Moke's GVW is 2,300 pounds. So therefore, Moke is a low-speed vehicle, not an automobile, and Moke is a low-speed vehicle, not a golf cart. So we define all that to now go into the LMO as it defines what can and can't be in different areas. So the first thing we need to look at is commercial services. So commercial services are the sales, rental, or servicing of goods and commodities that are either delivered or provided on premises. Those can be personal services, product repair, or services for consumer and business goods. So these vehicles are consumer goods. It does not allow, though, vehicle sales or services. But as we get in further in the LMO, we start reviewing what vehicle sales and services are. And vehicle sales and services classify automobiles, including motorcycles and light trucks, for the sales, leasing, and servicing of automobiles, motorcycles, and light trucks. We then need to define what an auto rental is. An auto rental, according to the LMO, is an establishment where new or used passenger automobiles are offered for short-term lease to the general public. Auto sales are also an establishment where new or used passenger automobiles or light trucks are offered for sale or long-term lease. So after going through these different definitions and understanding what Moke and Scusa define as and how the LMO actually defines what can and can't be in different areas, by definition of the South Carolina Motor Vehicle Code and the LMO, Moke and Scusa are neither passenger automobiles or motorcycles. Since they're not passenger automobiles or motorcycles, they cannot be defined in the LMO as auto sales or rentals. When something can't be defined as what it is, it has to be defined as the other. So that's back to where we believe these are better defined as other commercial services. Again, without a classification and without a part to put it into, it must be other. Further, with the towns deciding that it needs to create a new classification to actually define a low-speed vehicle, it confirms that these items are not auto rental or auto sales, because if they were those things, then they wouldn't have to create a new category to define those things. And when a category is required to make a new classification, then by definition, it can't be the thing that it's trying to be defined as now. So when you can't define it as the thing now, again, it's back to other is the best way to define these items. So that's the end of our current prepared presentation. We hope that you understand how the definitions of these items are really, really important as considering it and how they compare to the state code and the LMO, and we look forward to granting our appeal. And I'm now ready to take whatever questions anybody has for me.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. I have a couple. You may have covered this at the beginning, but what license is required to operate a Moke?
A driver's license.
And is there an age limit for who can operate a Moke?
According to South Carolina law, a low-speed vehicle can be operated by any licensed driver 16 years of age or older. According to my terms and conditions of my soon-to-be rental agreement, you must be 21 years or older to rent them from me. But by definition in the state, you're allowed to purchase one of these at 16 years old and drive them, or you are allowed to use someone else's and drive it at 16 years of age. But for my rental operations, you must be 21.
And I believe you said that no license was required to operate a Scusa?
That is correct. Well, for, there is no special endorsement required to operate a moped in South Carolina. In South Carolina, you can apply for a moped license at 15 years of age. And then if you are 16 years or older with any type of driver's license, you can legally operate a Scusa. Same thing, though, in my rental operations, to rent one from me, you must be 21 years or older and a licensed driver.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if the board has any questions. We'll start with Dr. Ponder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you go back to
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you go back to the slide that has the definitions or lack thereof automobile?
That one?
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. I have no other question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lautermil?
In the same vein, and I think we just went past it, the slide that shows the definition of low-speed vehicle. Okay, there we go. Okay, so the MOKE max speed per this definition is 25 miles per hour.
Not just by definition, but requirement by federal code. A low-speed vehicle is not allowed to travel more than 25 miles per hour according to the federal code requirements. This specific Federal Motor Vehicle Standard 500, Part 49, Section 57, 1.500 of the CFR.
Okay.
There are some very specific requirements that a item must have to be classified as a low-speed vehicle. The main things of those are it must travel between 20 and 25 miles an hour, at least 20 and not more than 25. It must have seat belts. It must have lights. It must have multiple mirrors.
Good. Somewhere, somewhere in all of these definitions, I guess I, there was reference to 35 miles per hour somewhere.
So you're correct. What that is, is that is in the definition of where a MOKE or where a low-speed vehicle can travel. So a low-speed vehicle by South Carolina Code, I'll find it for you, is able to travel on any roadway that is 35 miles an hour or less. So a MOKE can travel on the south end of Hilton Head from Panera Bread, south. All of the roadways basically from Panera Bread, south, are 35 miles an hour or less. A person is not able to come to Hilton Head, rent a MOKE, and use it as their primary means of auto rental, because they can't get to the airport or to and from the airport. They can't get to and from curers. They can't get to and from other areas of the island. So at the end of the day, these are just kind of electric toys for somebody who has, who wants to have a unique experience and has a few extra dollars to spend on a unique experience. They are not regular vehicles. They are electric toys.
Good. I'm with you.
Yeah. And it is a really weird thing to classify and to go through, and that was the hardest part about, I think, all the communications back and forth with the town staff, and it was really good open communications, and nobody was, nobody was having any unpleasant conversations back and forth other than, oh, my goodness, this is taking forever, and I have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of cars that are sitting. But I get it. I understand that I am, I am creating a need for a new area. My main frustration in all this is that if the, if the new changes to the LMO pass, I'm going to be able to operate exactly where I want to be able to operate anyway. So this whole process isn't really a whether it can or can't be. It's just kind of a when I'm going to be able to go to wherever I want to go to anyway. Because based upon what town staff is saying that they want to do, they're saying they want to create a new category in the LMO that would allow low-speed vehicle companies to operate in many areas, including the Seapine Circle District, where I'm trying to operate out of now. So the main point of my appeal, I guess, is to do a couple of things. One, I don't want to co-locate with my other businesses, because I really do think that it's a safety issue. I don't want the general public coming to where I've got trucks all day, every day, running hundreds and thousands of bikes in and out. And it's easier just in the whole total process of putting some of the electrical infrastructure to be able to charge these things, to just do it once at one spot. So, so if the LMO amendments go through as Terry and the staff are pursuing, I'm going to be able to operate out of 59 New Orleans anyway. It's just a matter of when and how many times I have to reprint my marketing materials and how much infrastructure I have to duplicate.
And a follow-up. Your intention, when you have these folks sign the contracts, and they are leaving your property with their MOKE or SCOKE, SCUSA, will they be given a map or something restricting, showing the restrictions of where they may or may not travel? You know, those of us that live here may know the speed limits, but visitors certainly may not.
They will. So I do a bike map. I do literally 100,000 of these things a year. And in the version of the bike map, it has where all the bike paths are. So in the version of the SCUSA and the MOKE, it will have those areas highlighted in green that they are allowed to go to and highlighted in red where they are not allowed to go to. It will also be very, very, very clear that electric vehicles are not allowed on the beach. So you can't take these things anywhere near a beach. It will also be very clear that electric vehicles are not allowed on the pathways. And I completely get the reason why the town does not want electric bicycles on the pathways. They're unsafe for the people who rent the bikes from us regularly. SCUSA has no place being on a pathway. A MOKE's too wide to get on a pathway, but a SCUSA has no place to be on a pathway. Riding them on the street is actually a really easy process, and they, and they're fun. I'll take a, I don't know if anybody's seen us running around in the MOKE. I've got all sorts of different color MOKEs, so we run different color MOKs around to go get ice cream and just get out and about a little bit. And it's like you're perpetually in a parade. People are smiling and waving at you, and you're smiling and waving at people. And when you travel down Pope Avenue, nobody's going faster than 25 miles an hour, because they're all actually driving along with you, smiling and taking pictures. So they are a really unique, fun thing. I think this island needs some more unique, fun things. And it kind of goes a little bit with Mr. Jerry's comments about businesspeople trying to rebuild some areas of Hilton Head that may have been let go for a while. So this old radio station building needs some help, and it needs something to reinvigorate it. And this is the first step along with the TruSmith people in making this be a nice, new area for locals and tourists to like to come to.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see John White on. John, are you still on?
I'm here.
Right.
I think you did a nice job with your presentation. You answered the three questions I had. Just one other that just popped up was, have you investigated the different plantations' acceptance?
So, yeah, so I live in Wexford, and it's perfectly fine in Wexford, and it's actually perfectly fine in any of them, because they're not golf carts. So the plantations have regulations about whether you are allowed to have a private golf cart or not. These aren't golf carts. So the plantations' statements on whether a golf cart is or is not allowed, it doesn't actually apply to them. So a low-speed recreational vehicle, or I mean, a low-speed vehicle is allowed on any roadway, and there are no current prohibitions of low-speed vehicles in the plantations.
Thank you very much.
Yep. For a SCUSA, you can't take it into Seapines, because there's no two-wheeled vehicles allowed in Seapines.
Right. Thank you very much.
Recognize Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. I want to understand some of the testimony of Mr. Bullock. It's my understanding that your testimony is the speed limit on Pope Avenue is no more than 30 miles per hour. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And how about the speed limits? I don't think you testified about this, but how, what are the speed limits on South Forest Beach Drive and North Forest Beach Drive?
30. There may be a 35 section, but I don't remember there being a 35 section. So 35 is on New Orleans. 35 is on 278 from Panera South. 35 is on Palmetto Bay Road. 25 is Arrow, and it's side roads. And North and South Forest are either 25 or 30, because they've been cutting back the speed. Like Pope got cut back recently to 30 miles an hour.
Okay. I'll ask the staff for clarification on those speed limits in a moment, but those are my questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walser.
Yes, I'd like to know about, in staff's review of the, of your location, in other words, their only objection was this definition of auto sales and things. In other words, you must have submitted a site plan to show that you're going to store these vehicles outside. You mentioned you're going to store the SCUSA's inside. I mean, so the site plan aspect of this by the town has been approved. Is that correct?
A site plan was never requested by the town. The only requests were in Terry's email of where they would be stored. If they, so she'd said that they could approve the business license at 59 New Orleans if stored inside. There was nothing in that communication that talked about classifying as an auto rental or auto sale. And I probably could have shortcutted this whole process and said, yep, they're all going inside. But that's not the actual truth. The truth is, is that I have to do some serious reconstruction and changes to the building to allow the MOKE to come inside. They're 2,300-pound vehicles. So they, I could, but it's a tremendous amount of work to it. The SCUSA, on the other hand, weigh 95 pounds. They're very easy to bring inside. But a MOKE is a substantial-sized thing, and storing them outside is a normal process. And there are multiple MOKE in the Low Country that I have not sold. They were here before I got my exclusive supply agreement with them. So there are multiple MOKE on DeFuski. There are multiple MOKE in Palmetto Bluff. There are starting to be more MOKE on Hilton Head, because they did, the town did give me a business license at my Three Pensacola Place location, so I could at least go through with the contracts that I'd signed with people to purchase them. So I have sold another one in DePalmetto Bluff, one on Hilton Head, and one in, in, oh, the big neighborhood in Bluffton, that's the retirement community. Sun City. So of my first kind of three or four weeks of actual operations, I have three of them sold.
All right. So my point is, if you wanted to store everything outside, you could.
There is nothing that would prohibit that.
And that's permitted by the LMO, I take it?
Yeah, I don't, in all of my readings of the LMO, I see nothing that would tell me that I could not park a MOKE and a SCUSA in a parking lot. There is nothing that precludes their ability to be parked in a parking lot.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Do any other board members have an additional question for Mr. Bullock?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a follow-up to that.
Okay, Ms. Ponder had raised her hand first. I'll recognize her.
Hi, Mr. Bullock. You said that none of the gated communities have adopted any restrictions that would prohibit MOKs.
There are, there are no prohibitions of low-speed vehicles that I'm aware of in any of the gated communities.
Right. There are prohibitions on golf carts, yes.
Golf carts, absolutely.
Do you believe that that, that that lack of prohibition is simply because nobody knew what they were? These are new? Do you expect that there, that there might be prohibitions adopted once people realize that these vehicles are, exist and are coming into the communities?
No, because they're, they are so different than a golf cart. They, they're, one, they're better for traffic flow. They are eight miles an hour faster than a golf cart. So they do, there is, there is, there is not the same slowing down of traffic effect that a golf cart has. It is traveling at primarily the gated community's max speed. If not, I know from my neighborhood, it's actually one mile an hour more than the max, max speed, because we're 24 miles an hour in Wexford. But throughout most of Seapines, they are 25 to 30. So they're, they're not going to slow up traffic. They may actually do traffic a favor of slowing them down to the proper speed limit, because they can't technically speed. What the private communities do with them, I don't know. That's outside of my, my kind of purview, but I know that according to South Carolina vehicle law, they're allowed to be on any roadway up to 35 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Ms. Lautermil?
Yes, thank you. My question, I guess, is about your inventory levels. Assuming your business, you know, does what obviously you would hope it to do, how many MOKs and SCUSA's would you envision, you know, being on the lot in the, in your inventory at the time?
So my plan is, is to be in the six-ish or so for the MOKE inventory, and then the 10 to 12 range for SCUSA. I may have a little bit more than that for the specific to be sold, and that's probably something I haven't explained a little bit. There's a, there's a double process with this process. There is the side of the business that sells these items retail to people to own and drive themselves. And then there is another side of the business where we hold inventory to rent to people for, for eight hours overnight a day, a week, or whatever they want to rent them for. So there's a sales side and a rental side. Those inventories can't really mix. Once I've transitioned an item over to the rental side, it stays in the rental side. So that's where I say about six MOKE and about a dozen SCUSA.
Thank you.
Well, that was going to be my question, but thank you, Lisa. Any other questions? If not, up, Ms. Bryson?
Sorry, thank you, sir. Mr. Bullock, you testified that you'll be providing maps of where MOKs and SCUSA's can and cannot go, specifically with regard to SCUSA's. And you're going to indicate that the SCUSA's are not permitted on the pathways on the island. MOKs, as you said, testified are too large for pathways. In addition to the maps, how will you ensure that the SCUSA's and MOKs will not be on the pathways?
So kind of the same, yeah. Yeah. So, so there, there is an element of inability to force a renter to do something once they have possession of it, but it's kind of like how we handle it in the bike business. I've been getting lots and lots of calls from Palmetto Dune Security that people have locked up bikes on a bike path off of 48 Mauringe Buoy. And when Palmetto Dune Security calls me and says somebody's done the right, wrong thing with where they've locked their bikes, we immediately go pick it up and terminate their license and, or terminate their, their rental contract with us. Same thing with these. If you violate a provision of the contract, the rental contract with us that says thou shall not go here, here, or here, or do this or that with them, or operate in an unsafe manner, your rental contract is immediately terminated. So at that point in time, I repossess the item, and I put it back into inventory and rent it to someone who knows how to follow the rules.
And what if they have been sold?
What if they have been what?
What if they have been sold and not rented?
Control, I have no control over what someone does. I have no control over what someone does once they're sold. That's their personal possession, just as I would have no control, or a car dealer would have no control, or a bicycle company would have no control after it's sold where it is. If it's my possession, I have control. If title has passed, I have no control over that person, their actions, or the item.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. We'll go now to hear from the staff. I believe Terry Lewis is going to make the presentation.
Yes. Good morning, everybody. This is Terry Lewis. So as Mr. Bullock said, we've had multiple conversations for the past several months about this use and about how to classify it. And in looking at it, and in looking at specifically the way that Mr. Bullock had described these uses to our staff attorney so that he could make some other decisions related to it, both descriptions included vehicle in that description. So a MOKE was described as a four-wheeled electric vehicle, SCUSA as a two-wheeled electric vehicle. And so looking at that, it seemed like the most appropriate use for it would be some sort of vehicle, and we do have a vehicle sales and service classification in the LMO. So that's where I started, but I didn't just put it in that category and not look at any other categories. We also looked at the, you know, could they be similar to a bike shop, bike rental? And then also, at Mr. Bullock's request, I also looked at other commercial services. And so I made the determination, as you can see, that they were vehicle sales and services. Felt that that was the most appropriate category. And again, I don't disagree with Mr. Bullock that they are not listed in the LMO. There is no specific use for these two, for MOKs and SCUSA's. You know, that's the perfect fit in the LMO currently. But what the LMO says is when that occurs, I need to look at the LMO and find where it best fits. And even after I made my determination and sent it, Mr. Bullock requested that I look again and see, could I consider it other commercial services? And so I looked at that. I looked at that use category, looked at the types of uses that were allowed in it, and then did some additional research for how these might be classified in other areas. And that's where I determined that probably the best course of action long-term would be to suggest that we move forward with an LMO amendment to create this category because there are other items that, other uses that may fall into this low-speed recreational vehicle category as well. But with that being said, there are a couple of things to keep in mind. One, that being a low-speed recreational vehicle, which is what I would classify these as and what I would pursue, I would put that under the vehicle sales and service use category. I looked at whether it would be more appropriate under other commercial services, discussed that with staff. But just by the nature of it being a vehicle, it seems like that would be the best place to put it. The other thing that I want to make clear to everybody, though, is just because staff has added it to a list to consider, that list still has to be vetted by the town manager, and then it has to go through the regular process of the LMO Committee, of Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Public Planning Committee, and then Town Council. So there's certainly no guarantee that it will even move forward or that it would move forward exactly as I proposed. So at this point, where staff is, is we feel that the best, that the determination for MOKs and SCUSA's is that they would be most similar to a vehicle sales and service use. Again, recognizing that isn't necessarily exactly what they are, but that that's the best use out of what's available in the LMO right now.
Am I allowed to just make a quick clarification on vehicle versus automobile?
Well, hold on just a minute. Terry, does that conclude your, your remarks?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. Do, let's see if the board has any questions of Ms. Lewis. Start with Mr. Walzak.
No, no, no comments.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. Ms. Lewis, is it your opinion then, in order for these two types of vehicles to be allowed in the, at the location on New Orleans, that there would need to be a text amendment to the LMO?
Betsy, excuse me for interrupting. I think you, I think you weren't coming through it first. Would you start from the beginning?
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. The question for Ms. Lewis, is it your opinion that in order for these types of vehicles to be allowed in the Seapine Circle District, which is the New Orleans location, that there would need to be a text amendment to the LMO?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it, sir.
All right, Mr. White?
I have no questions.
Ms. Loudermilk?
No questions.
And Dr. Ponder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From the emails and things that, that were in this packet that we had, it seems as though staff is in favor of amending the LMO to accommodate this kind of vehicle. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think that we've seen more of these types of vehicles on the island, and so I think it would be better all around to have a specific use for it in the LMO.
Right. And I understand when you say, just because we, we start the process doesn't mean, A, that it'll go through at all, B, that would go through smoothly, or C, that it would go through in a timely manner, correct?
Yes, and that it would go through as we drafted as well. So I may recommend that it's allowed in the Seapine Circle District, but that could be a district that's pulled out when it gets through any part of the process.
I see. And under, I don't know, best or worst-case scenarios, what, what kind of time, or timing are we talking about here?
Probably four to six months.
Is that best case or worst case? Is four the best case and six the, the worst case?
Four is the best case, and that's very, it'd be very difficult to get it through because it has to be drafted, has to be advertised, and then, like I said, go through all of the, the parts of the process.
Right. What's the worst case? I mean, at worst case being it doesn't pass at all, but if it does pass, what's the, what's the worst-case scenario and timing, in your opinion? There's no way to know, but in your opinion?
Maybe six months. It's a little bit trickier right now that we're doing virtual meetings as well because scheduling is a little bit different.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, again, I've got a follow-up then on that. Terry, so what I, if I understood correctly, though, it would, in essence, be a two-part concept to the LMO. One, defining these low-speed vehicles so that they have a specific definition and category. But two, and this is where, correct me if I'm wrong, in, in your opinion, even with a specific definition, they would fall under the vehicle sales and service category?
Yeah, that's where, did I hear you right? That's where I would recommend that it go, that, under that vehicle sales and service category, that's where we have auto sales, auto rental, auto repair. That's where this low-speed recreational vehicle, that's where I would recommend that it be placed.
Okay. So in that case, then there is still the issue to be considered whether, and again, I think you mentioned it, Seapine's Circle District would amend their permitted uses to include vehicle sales or to carve out the specific definition and, and treat it as an exception.
So what we would do if we would move forward with this is we would develop the definition, and then we would also have which zoning districts it was permitted in, and then whether it was permitted in those zoning districts by right or by condition, or by special exception. I don't see us doing it by special exception for this use, but we would determine if it was by right or by condition.
Okay. So again, Seapine's Resort, Seapine Circle District would need to change their permitted use to include vehicles. And I realize this is very hypothetical, but that, in essence, is what would have to happen.
Well, and keep in mind, too, our Seapine Circle District is not within the Seapine's master plan area. It's outside of that area.
Yes.
So Seapine's Resort would not have to...
I get that. I got that part. Okay, all right. Yeah. Okay, thank, thank you.
Anyone else with questions for the town staff?
I just would like a point of clarification because I want to make sure I really understand this. For the town, you believe that these low-speed vehicles should be classified under, as automobiles? And you would keep them there, but then as a second part, you would have to amend the usage so that these particular kinds of automobiles could be sold, rented, operated within the certain district?
So not exactly. Right now, yes, my determination states that they are, that I'm classifying them as auto sales and auto rentals because there isn't another use in the code. So right now, that's what they are. They're vehicle sales, vehicle rentals. Under what I would be proposing to, to take forward as a text amendment, that category of vehicle services would still be where the low-speed vehicles would fall, but they would no longer be classified as an auto sale or auto rental. They would be classified then as a low-speed recreational vehicle.
So we're creating a classification?
We're creating a use under the vehicle, the vehicle sales and services classification.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. So Terry, you're saying your proposal would be to create a new definition of low-speed vehicles, then recommend within the town LMO which districts low-speed vehicles could be rented or sold, and, and address it in that manner, correct?
That's correct. But until that, until, until we can take forward something like that, I'm left with what's in the LMO today.
Got it. Okay. Last chance. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. I have one question for Ms. Lewis, and then an inquiry as to whether the staff attorney is available because I have a question for the staff attorney. The first for Ms. Lewis is, I don't recall your testimony today, including the documents that we received, the, the opinion of Nicole Dixon given on August 3, 2017, to Attorney Chester Williams regarding rentals of mopeds, segways, golf carts, or bicycles. Can you review that for us?
Sure, absolutely. And this was something that I had sent to Mr. Bullock and then included as part of the packet as well. So it was a determination that Nicole Dixon had written at the request of Mr. Williams on behalf of his client in August of 2017 related to the use of mopeds, segways, and golf carts. At that point, it was determined that those would be classified as, in this case, auto rental. Because they were looking to rent them, not to sell them. So I did take that into consideration. I did take that into consideration when I made my determination as well.
And has that been a consistent opinion of the staff? Have you not changed from that opinion since August 3, 2017?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I may ask Mr. Ryan, the staff attorney, a question now?
Please proceed.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, it's my understanding that the Board of Zoning Appeals does not have jurisdiction to amend the text of the LMO, to add definitions, or is that correct?
That's correct. It would have to go through a zoning amendment process that Ms. Lewis referenced.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Those are my questions, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Okay, I cut myself off. Anyone else then? If not, Mr. Bullock, you may proceed with your five-minute rebuttal.
Sure. A couple of things. A vehicle and an automobile are not the same thing. So an automobile is a type of vehicle, but a vehicle in and of itself is just something that is used to transport something else. So an automobile is a type of vehicle. So, so that causes, that equal defining of the two isn't quite there. One other thing, I actually agree with the way that the LMO is written now with not wanting auto sales or auto rentals. You don't want car lots in the Seapine Circle District. Totally agree with that. This isn't a car lot. This is a commercial service for people to enjoy something, for people to have an electric toy. It's a toy store. But so, so the way it's written precluding a big sea of automobiles out there for rental or for sale, I absolutely agree with. But this isn't, this isn't the same thing. This isn't the same kind of business. This isn't the same kind of operation. So, so it's a very different thing, and, and that's why I agree with Terry trying to make a new classification, whether it goes into the auto part or not. I don't totally agree with because I think it is its own standalone thing. But that's way outside of my pay grade to understand how things get into the LMO. But I would say just don't get that causality between a vehicle and an automobile being same.
Okay. That concludes your rebuttal then. It's, we'll see if we have questions from the board relating to your rebuttal. I'll start with one. It seems to me that this issue boils down to how to classify these two items, a MOKE and a SCUSA. The town is saying that it believes that the best place, given the inventory of options in the LMO, is that these are more like motor vehicles. You are proposing that they be, I believe, other services. Could you take us back to your presentation and go over again why you believe they should fall under the, I think I'm correct, other services category?
Certainly. Hold on one second. Let me get my screen sharing back up for you. They are other services. Can you see my screen? Is it up?
Yes, yes, you're on.
Yes, sorry. So by definition of the South Carolina Vehicle Code and LMO, the MOKE and SCUSA are not passenger automobiles or motorcycles. And the LMO is clear that it speaks about automobiles, light trucks, and motorcycles. It doesn't say every kind of means of transportation or every kind of version of vehicle. It is specific in its definition that it talks about automobiles, light trucks, and motorcycles. So since they are not by South Carolina Motor Vehicle Code defined as an automobile, light truck, or motorcycle, they can't be defined as auto sales or auto rentals according to the LMO. So since they are not auto rental or auto sales, when you can't classify something as an existing thing, the whole genus, phylum, species, all that stuff, I can't remember from science classes. So, but when you can't classify something as an existing thing, it must be other. So when you go through the different classifications in the LMO, other commercial services meets it very, very well because in the definition of other commercial services, you're allowed to sell and rent items. These are items. Let me get to that other commercial services for you real fast. There it is. Other commercial services. Other commercial services, establishments involved in the sale, rental, and incidental servicing of goods and commodities that are delivered on, delivered or provided on premise. That's exactly what I'm doing with these items. I am selling and renting a commodity that is provided on premise. So other commercial services defines what these things are in my process of doing business with these things, the best of everything that I can find in the LMO.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, let's start with Dr. Ponder. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Does the dog have any questions?
She wants a bite of the mug.
Come on.
Ms. Loudermilk?
I have no further questions, no.
Mr. White?
Not necessarily a question as much as a statement. It strikes me the LMO has restrictive categories from which to choose. And clearly, this is a unique product. And the definition is falling outside the scope of the LMO. We have to find a way to identify and allow growth in our, in our business community for new products. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Just by way of protocol, when each of you makes a comment or asks a question, it would be helpful if you sort of said, that's all I've got, or I'm done, or something like that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Bryson?
No further questions of Mr. Bullock. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Walzak?
No further questions, and I'm ready to move on with this. Done.
All right, thank you. Well, now, we've concluded all of this. Does anyone have any further questions for staff? Or Mr. Bullock? Before we begin to discuss how we feel about this? Hearing none, I'll start in the reverse order and ask Charlie Walzak if you have any comments you want to make about this appeal.
Yes, I think the presentation was excellent and I, on both sides, the town and Mr. Bullock. And I think it's quite clear to me anyway that this in fact does meet the category of commercial services, not auto sales or auto rentals. So, you know, I'm, I'm prepared in that sense to move forward with, with approval of the appeal. Done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bryson?
I agree with regard to the presentations. I think it was very helpful to understand more completely what a Moke and a Scusa, what, what they both are. So appreciate that. Also appreciate the staff's assistance in helping us understand this question before us. I do, however, believe that this requires an amendment to the LMO and that the board is without jurisdiction to do that. And so I would vote to affirm the decision or interpretation made by the staff whenever it is time to make that vote.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Nothing other than the fact that I agree with Charlie's position. I think that this is, again, a categorization issue. And I would, I would also agree to, to affirm the, the appeal.
Okay, Ms. Loudermilk?
I, I agree with Ms. Bryson's assessment. I, I think here we are, you know, restricted by the LMO at the moment. I clearly understand that these are not automobiles, but the overriding category in the LMO is vehicle sales and service. I mean, within the Mokes' own definition, it is a low speed vehicle. And when you read the language in the LMO, again, it doesn't seek to be all encompassing as its defining uses. It uses the verbiage, the uses include, but are not limited to. And then it mentions auto sales and rentals. So it does not exclude other possible categories. So while, you know, in concept, I might be in favor of Scuses and Mokes. I don't think at this point the LMO permits us to do anything other than deny the appeal. I mean, that's what I think.
Yep, thank you. I had myself muted. Dr. Ponder?
I'm really sort of thrown in the air here that I think there's, there's nothing inhibiting Scuses. I think Scuses are fine. I think the Moke is, has some definitional issues. And I will say, I think the fact that, that South Carolina law does not even define automobile presents a big problem, right? Because you can't, if it's not defined, you can't say what an automobile is, but you also can't say what an automobile is not. So to say that the Moke is not an automobile, you can't say that anymore than you can say that the Moke is an automobile. Because it's not defined. I, I, I'm really, I think that the, but on top of that, if it's not defined, it throws every usage of the word in the LMO into question. The category itself is now a question. So even the uses and whatever is defined in the LMO currently are all in question. So I'm inclined to, to think that the LMO needs significant work. And I think it's, it's hard to. It's just sort of hard to be clear on, on this issue. Because it, nothing seems to fit anywhere. I would hope that, that we will make some changes to the LMO going forward because this won't be, this won't be the last time by far that this comes up. I'm inclined to be in favor of the Moke and the Scusa, but I, I'm really still not decided. That's it.
Thank you. It seems to me that the BZA's decision in this case needs to, or revolves around determining whether the classification of Mokes and Scuses is correct in the determination letter, or whether it was not correct. And once you've reached that conclusion, it's pretty clear how you, how you go from there. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to say before the chair solicits a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would.
Mr. Walzak?
I look at this very similarly to bicycle rentals. Bicycles are toys also, in the sense that, you know, they're here for recreational purposes essentially. They are low speed vehicles per se. So just because it happens to have an electric motor on them, I don't see the, the big difference in the, in the, the actual, let's say, use of, of a particular zoning area, whether they, they're going to rent, you know, Mokes and whatever, as opposed to bicycles. I mean, it's a commercial recreational use. It's not Hertz or Avis. So I just wanted to add that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, I believe you wanted to speak.
Mr. Walzak made basically my exact point. Yeah, it, it's that. And then also to Dr. Ponder, while automobiles are not defined in South Carolina law, low speed vehicles are specifically defined. So the, the state took the time to define what a low speed vehicle is. The state took the time to define what a moped is. They did not take the time to define an automobile, which means that they are different than automobiles by definition. Denotatively, they are not the same.
Understood, thank you.
We'll need a motion here, and I would ask that you look at your template and see how you want to proceed, Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. I move to affirm the decision or interpretation made by staff.
We have a second?
And I would second that.
Motion by Bryson, second by Loudermilk. Any discussion with the board? Hearing none. The motion is to sustain or uphold the ruling by the town. Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walzak?
Against the motion.
Mr. Katir?
Against the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
Against the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
Against the motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion fails.
Question for Mr. Ryan?
Sir?
Stephen, we had a motion to uphold the town's determination, which failed on a four to two vote. Does that mean that the town's determination is reversed? Or do we need to have another motion to uphold, or pardon me, to reverse the town's determination?
There would need to be another vote to have an action carried forth. There's not, without there being a specific default, a vote to make a determination would be needed.
Okay. Chair will entertain another motion, and I'm assuming that the motion will address the, the classification of the product here. So whoever makes that motion needs to address that.
I'll be glad to make that motion.
Mr. Walzak?
Yes, I move that the Board of Zoning Appeals reverse the decision that was made by staff because they misinterpreted in applying the various definitions that are in, in the existing LMO. Now, to go further on that, I would like your help, Mr. Chairman, of what you'd like to see in that motion.
I think you need to include in your motion how you believe Mokes and Scuses should be classified under the LMO, if not as auto vehicles.
Okay. The, oh, I just lost, hold on. Okay, I'm sorry. I must have hit a button and I lost the screen. The reason for my motion is that I consider this to be a commercial recreational use and not an automobile or auto sales and servicing. And that's where I think the misinterpretation was made.
And where would you classify this product under the LMO?
Other, under, under section 16 dash 10 dash 103 G point one, under commercial services.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
That was a pretty violent second there, Mr. White.
Yeah, I'm pretty emphatic about that.
Motion by Walzak, second by White, to reverse the town's determination in this particular case. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walzak?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Mr. Katir?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
Against the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
Against the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Town's determination is reversed. Thank you. This concludes this, this hearing.
Thank you all for a very informed and well thought through discussion. I really appreciate you all taking the time to, to sit through a lot of boring details. It wasn't just pictures of pretty cars and Scuses. So thank you for taking the time to consider it, and I appreciate you agreeing with us.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda will be hearing appeal, APL 001167-2020 from Douglas McNeil on behalf of Hilton Head Helicopters, doing business as Atomic VR Virtual Reality. The appellant is appealing staff's determination that a virtual reality helicopter arcade game is not permitted at, and I believe the correct address is 38 Gateway Circle, a product, pardon me, a property that is owned light commercial. Mr. McNeil, if you're prepared, you have 20 minutes. The town staff will have an opportunity to present after you, and you'll be afforded an opportunity for a five minute rebuttal following that. You're ready, you may proceed.
Yes, let me check to make sure you can all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good to go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Doug McNeil, and I'm the attorney for Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, DVA, Atomic VR Virtual Reality. I believe joining us, if they're still there for today's hearing, are Chad Fatt, who's a helicopter pilot and the sole owner and member of Hilton Head Helicopters LLC. There's Chad, others, Chad under Marianna's name, Marianna might be there too. Also, we have Marianna Figaro, who supervises the day to day operations at Hilton Head Helicopters Business, located at 38 Gateway Circle off Dillon Road. And that's the, for those who are familiar with it, it's the old airport terminal in which the appellant refers to as the Adventure Center. So the two businesses that are in question, both the helicopter tour operation, which is not before y'all, and the DVA of the virtual reality business are located within the same premises under the same roof and kind of share that space together. By way of background, in the summer of 2019, Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, DVA, Atomic Virtual Reality, and I'll refer to them as Atomic VR, send them out, get the whole thing in there, for Atomic VR is the video aspect, contacted the town concerning the issuance of a business license for the business. Town representative from the business license department, Abby Lancaster, visited the premises and approved the issuance of a business license for Atomic VR's activity, conducted it 38 conducted it at thirty-eight Gateway Circle. And a copy of an August eight, two thousand nineteen email from Miss Lancaster approving the business license is included with Atomic VR's G five, twenty twenty appeal narrative as exhibit five. So that's part of the package. On August, and maybe this would be a good time to see if we can pull up a couple photos. I saw that Mariana uploaded a few photos of the of the virtual realities. Is that something you can get up for us, Chad?
I can try. I'm not real good at this, but I will definitely give it a try.
Mr. McNeil, while they're trying that, could you perhaps get a little closer to your microphone? I'm
Sure.
coming a little far.
Is that better?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
So can we show you the VR? I have my, I have the station on. Can I show you instead of showing the pictures?
They're right there on the premises, so you know, that might be a good idea.
Would that work if I show you each station?
Mr. Chairman, is that permissible?
Yes, if you can get the screen up where we can see it.
Yeah, okay, give me one second.
I think she's actually going to walk through the area so you can just, you know, see what's there and ask any questions.
That, this right here is one station. This right here is the headset. And this is what people will use. You'll put people on the headsets, and you can kind of see the screen. It's what they see.
Okay.
And that's one of the stations of a few of them, right?
Yeah, this is two stations. Like, you can see that's the TV, the monitor, and the controllers. And that one right there is the second station.
Okay.
So we have four stations, and that's only four people can play at a time.
Okay.
If questions arise as to that down the road here, folks, I think that Mariana can probably explore that a little further with you, but I'll proceed if that's okay.
Please proceed. We'll, unless someone has a burning question in the middle of your presentation, we'll wait till the end.
Okay. So on August nineteen, two thousand nineteen, Atomic VR was approved for and was issued a town of Hilton Head Allen business license for its business of, and this was in quotes, "video reality headset station rentals", essentially what Ms. Figueroa just showed you. A copy of the two thousand nineteen business license number two three zero three five, which was issued on August nineteen, two thousand nineteen, is attached as exhibit six to Atomic VR's appeal narrative dated June five, twenty twenty. The town in late two thousand nineteen or early twenty twenty presented Atomic VR with a renewal notice for its twenty twenty business license. That information was forwarded to me and working with the business license department in the ensuing weeks. Honor about February twenty-one, twenty twenty, we submitted Atomic VR's twenty twenty business license application to the town's business license department. There was no change in the owner operating the business from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. That is, the owner at all relevant times has been Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, DVA Atomic VR Virtual Reality. The town LMO official in a determination letter dated May twenty-two, twenty twenty has now taken the position by the approval of an issuance through Atomic VR of a two thousand nineteen business license that an indoor commercial recreation use is not a use that is permitted in the IL zoning district. The virtual reality game operation of Atomic VR is incidental to and compatible with Hilton Head Helicopter LLC's operation of the helicopter tour business at the same location. Beaufort County is the owner and operator of Hilton Head Airport, as you know, and there is a commercial operating agreement between Hilton Head Helicopters LLC and the county of Beaufort that specifically authorizes Hilton Head Helicopter LLC, DVA Atomic VR, to engage in the activity and service of virtual reality arcade. This commercial operating agreement is included with Atomic VR's July fifteen, twenty twenty supplemental narrative as attachment I. In reliance on the town's issuance of a two thousand nineteen business license and the authority provided in the airport agreement, Atomic VR has expended significant sums of money in developing and operating the virtual reality arcade portion of its business. A copy of the detailed summary of these expenditures, including supporting backup documentation, is included with Atomic VR supplemental narrative as attachment two. The total expenditures involved since the issuance of the two thousand nineteen business license are well in excess of one hundred thousand dollars. Now, some of that, to be fair, is, there's some overlap in marketing and there's some overlap in employee salary, but still the amount of expenditures directly related to the to the virtual reality operation is close to one hundred thousand dollars in its own right. Equipment's expensive, and the marketing has been expensive. So Atomic VR's operation is consistent and compatible with incidental to Hilton Head Helicopter LLC's operation of its helicopter services. As a virtual reality arcade does offer virtual helicopter experiences, and many of the customers taking helicopter tours also participate in the virtual reality arcade experience. In most cases, it's a fun and educational experience often shared by a family. It is respectfully submitted that the determination imposed by the LMO official, that is, the application of the ordinance zone I L to the particular piece of property and business would effectively prohibit it or unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. The authorization of the use sought to be prohibited will not be of any detriment to adjacent property or to the public good. It's a wide open area. There's adequate parking outside. There's no direct neighbors, and everything's pretty well spaced out up here. The character of the district will not be harmed by permitting this incidental use of the property of Hilton Head Helicopters LLC. And as said, there's ample parking on the property, approximately twenty to twenty-five spaces, which is never filled up for the operations there coming forth at the thirty-eight Gateway Circle. Atomic VR has justified reliance on the airport agreement and the two thousand nineteen business license issued by the town is supported by legal and ethical principles such as the doctrine of record of stopping South Carolina courts upheld that governmental bodies not immune from the application of record of stopping where its officers or agents act within the proper scope of their authority, which we believe is what the business license official on Miss Lancaster did in this case. The case law material articulating these principles is set forth in the supplemental narrative submitted on June five, twenty twenty. In conclusion, the appellant to Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, DVA Atomic VR Virtual Reality respectfully requests that the board of zoning appeals consider the appeal. And the record in this matter can find and determine that the appellant should be granted a limited exception and/or conditional approval to continue its operation of a virtual reality video gaming business at the location at thirty-eight Gateway Circle. And that the town of Hilton Head Business License Department should promptly remove the appellant's two thousand nineteen business license and issue a twenty twenty business license to the appellant. That's about the extent of it. If either Chad or Mariana have anything to add, I would certainly welcome their comments.
So I do have, our parking lot, it's never been an issue like Doc McNeil said. We have actually, the virtual reality is more for people that come and do our helicopter tours, and they kind of wait in our building. Instead of waiting, we do kind of have that option for them to play a little, like a roller coaster game. It's not something that people will actually come down here to do. It's more for people that actually wait once we are doing the helicopter, or if we have any rain or anything like that, that we're not able to fly. They do have the option to kind of wait, and we kind of offer them the virtual reality. That's the reason we kind of brought up the virtual reality, just for them to kind of do something else while they wait for the helicopter. We only have four stations. It's only for four people to play at a time. We are actually, so it's not something that, like an arcade, not something like a adventure co or anything like that. It's more like for them to wait once the helicopter.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McNeil, anything else before we go to questions from the board?
No, not at this time, no, for Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I do have one question from Mariana. Do people, you said that you use the arcade primarily for people who are going to do the reality helicopter tour, but do you have people who come just to use the arcade?
We do, but in location, it's more about the helicopter that are waiting for the helicopter. It's, I would say, one out of twenty.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if the staff has, pardon me, if the board has any questions. We'll start with Mr. Walzak.
Not at this time. I see this as an incidental use to what their true business is, but I'd like to hear from staff as to their reasoning and logic behind their decision.
Okay, there'll be an opportunity for that. Ms. Bryson, any questions for the appellant?
No, sir. I agree with Mr. Walzak's description of what they've testified about. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. White, any questions for the appellant?
No questions, sir.
Ms. Loudermilk?
Yes, I'd just, I'd like maybe clarification on revenue, your revenue stream. How do you charge your customers? Do they pay, you know, a fee for the helicopter ride? Do they pay a fee for the virtual reality experience? Explain to me your revenue source.
So it is, the helicopter has one fee in the virtual reality. It's an extra, like, add-on. It's, we have one IN number, so it's one company, so it's all go under that same IN number. And I would say it's more like a bonus, something that they can add to their experience.
So just to expand on that, is there any way you can estimate, or maybe you know this for sure, but you know, the percentage of revenues that are coming in from the helicopter rides and tours versus the actual, again, the virtual reality experience?
So the helicopter's ninety percent, and I would say the virtual reality is around ten percent.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Dr. Ponder, any questions?
I'm going to follow up on that question because that was going to be my question. How much are these things? How much do you charge for the helicopter ride, and how much do you charge for the virtual reality experience?
Helicopter ride, we have nine different kind of tours. So we start, it's kind of different. It's thirty-nine dollars per person, and it goes all the way to three forty-nine. So that kind of depends on what they do per person. All of them are per person. And then the the virtual reality is, I would say, a twenty dollars add-on.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from the staff. I believe Nicole Dixon is going to make the presentation. Ms. Dixon?
Good afternoon, Nicole Dixon, for the record. One thing I wanted to clear up before I start with getting into my presentation is a discrepancy with the address. We've advertised for fifty-two Gateway Circle. In the original business license request, they came in at one twenty Beach City Road. I've got an email in front of me that I sent to Mr. McNeil clarifying the property address because one twenty Beach City Road is the airport. And he responded back that the address of the property that they were occupying was fifty-two Gateway Circle. And that is what I wrote my determination on. I did not notice until just now that his appeal application says thirty-eight Gateway Circle. So I just wanted to clear that up. The LMO doesn't specifically require a property address in the advertisement. So the appeal request is appealing my determination, so it's really not property-specific in that both addresses are zoned the same. They're both zoned light industrial. So the determination doesn't change, but I just wanted to clear that up, and that's why the my letter and the advertisement shows fifty-two Gateway Circle. And then he does clarify, and I didn't notice it until just now, that was brought to my attention, a footnote on his appeal letter that says that my determination states fifty-two Gateway, and it's actually thirty-eight. But the fifty-two Gateway was based on an email he had sent me. So I wanted to clear that up. And then going into my presentation, staff received a business license request from Hilton Head Helicopters, and as part of that mentioned the virtual reality. There was discussion and conversation back and forth between myself and Mr. McNeil about the way that that business functioned, the virtual reality business functioned. So when staff receives a business license request, my staff will look at the zoning and make sure that that use is allowed in that zoning district. And the virtual reality arcade, as described, is not specifically listed in the LMO as a use. So as we figured out in the last appeal, when the use is not specifically listed, we would look at how the different use classifications are written in the LMO, and indoor commercial recreation is how staff classifies this use. And if you look at the definition, and I'm going to pull it up on my screen and hopefully I'm going to share the screen with you in a second. Can you see the definition up on your screen?
We can.
Okay, great. So some of the uses that are listed here for indoor commercial recreation are amusement and electronic game arcades, video games, pinball, et cetera, theme or amusement parks, boardwalks, attractions such as ride, bumper car, go-kart tracks, game booths, bowling alleys, et cetera. So staff in researching the proposed use, classified the arcade, video arcade, virtual reality business as an indoor commercial recreation use. And this specific use is not permitted in the light industrial zoning district. And I just wanted to show you a few pictures that are actually on the business's website. You know, the applicant says, has stated that it's accessory to the helicopter ride business, and it's just basically an add-on. You could see here that they throw birthday parties, corporate events, private events. So it's, it's it's its own primary principal use for the property. Show you some other pictures of some kids using the headset games. I believe this is a picture of them actually having a birthday party there. So it's not just an add-on accessory use to the helicopter games. It's an actual destination. People can go there to have their child's birthday party or, you know, businesses can go there and have a corporate event. If you look at the description that they list on their website, and it's probably too small for you to read, let me try to apologize. The mouse is not cooperating with me. Can you see my screen?
You'll have to share again.
Share again. Not at this time.
Okay, let me try that again. Can you see it?
No.
Okay. Okay, so here's a description on their website that talks about the entertainment that they provide and that they've gotten, you know, over forty different games that people can experience and that they can do these games with others around the world and go online and do these battles. So it's clearly to staff a destination use and not just accessory to a helicopter ride. And so this is the main reason why staff classifies it as an indoor commercial recreation use. Again, that use is not permitted on the property, which is zoned light industrial. You know, the applicant has stated in their appeal narrative that they're accessory to an aviation use. And if you look at the uses that, or if you look at the definition of the aviation service use, and I'll pull that up real quick on the screen. Okay, so if you see on the screen, I have the definition from the LMO of aviation and surface transportation and aviation services. And clearly, a destination such as indoor commercial recreation for video arcade and virtual reality business is not listed as a use that would be accessory to the aviation service. It is clearly its own primary use of the property. And again, is not permitted in the zoning district. I really don't have anything else to add. There's, you know, the use table provides the different zoning districts that indoor commercial recreation would be allowed and light industrial is not one of those districts that allows this type of use. Do you have any questions for me?
I think you can unshare your presentation. Okay. Thank you, Nicole. We'll go through in just a moment. I have a couple of questions I wanted to direct to our staff attorney, Stephen Ryan. Stephen, I sent you an email the other day telling you I was going to ask you these questions.
Yes, sir.
And in Mr. McNeil's letter, he states that atomic VR's reliance on the airport agreement in the 2019 business license issued by the town is supported by the principle of doctrine of equitable estoppel and that South Carolina courts have upheld that a governmental body is not immune from the application of equitable estoppel where its officers or agents act within the proper scope of their authority. Could you talk to the board about how this applies in this particular case?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Ryan, Staff Attorney for the Town of Hilton Head Island. We could talk at length about what equitable estoppel is. I'll try to be succinct in my answer and how it applies here. Equitable estoppel is a legal principle that will protect a party when they have relied on the conduct or representations of another to their detriment. It's used sometimes to prevent an outcome that would offend a sense of fairness or justice. There's essentially a three-part test for the party claiming detrimental reliance. The party claiming relief has to have a lack of knowledge or the means to gain knowledge of an element that was represented. The party claiming relief reasonably relied on the conduct of the party that made the representation. And the party claiming relief made a prejudicial change to their detrimental reliance. So yes, equitable estoppel can apply to municipalities, but only when its officers or agents, as was stated, are acting within the scope of their authority. However, there is no basis for estoppel if the officer is of limited authority. Generally, estoppel is not used to frustrate a town or government body's ability to implement its policies. Some of the questions that the board would have to answer if they are inclined to use equitable estoppel as a justification is, was the 2019 business license an approval of this zoning dispute that is now occurring in 2020? And if they answer that question is yes, the next question would be, does anyone in the license department have the authority to issue a limited exception under the LMO? And as we, and those are going to be the two questions before. So was that business license something that was within their authority to do and make these LMO disputes resolved? So those are the questions that would have to be answered if the board is inclined to use equitable estoppel as a justification for resolving, getting, answering their request by the arcade.
Okay, thank you. I do have another question, but before we go to that second one, let me ask if any members of the board have a question for Mr. Ryan about equitable estoppel. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Ryan, at the end of your analysis for us, you said there were two questions. The first question, I wasn't quite clear on, but what I'd like to know is about the process for issuance of a business license. Does the town's process include in that business license process some sort of checkoff about the proper zoning designation?
I couldn't answer that to what was conducted by the licensing office in 2019. If there's any other staff members that can speak more to that matter, I'd be happy to defer to them about some of the process and procedures used in other departments.
This is Nicole. Ms. Bryson, this is Nicole again. I would just like to clarify the process. When a business license is submitted, planning staff is one of the reviewers who checks the license for zoning. I would like to add as well that while there was a business license permit for the site for helicopter rides and virtual reality arcade previously, which I believe was issued back in 2015, it was under different ownership. There is not an active valid business license with the current owner, Mr. Chad Fath, according to the business license division. So when there was a change of ownership in 2019, the owner who had the permit previously, and I'll also add that staff on the planning side issued the approval back in 2015 in error. They should not have, you know, the zoning was not questioned back then, so the indoor commercial recreation use was not allowed back in 2015, but it was issued an error. So that owner did rely on the permit that the business license granted. They closed their permit in 2019. The new owner, Chad Fath, never applied for a business license in 2019, according to business license staff. And when they applied in 2015 is when I reviewed it against the LMO and denied the zoning part of the application. And that's when the discussion started with myself and Mr. McNeil about the use and and whether it was allowed to operate there or not.
Nicole, I believe you meant to say your review in 2020, not 2015.
I'm sorry?
You said when you reviewed the business license application in 2015, I believe you meant to say in 2020.
I reviewed the business license application in 2020, yes. When the original application came in in 2015 from the other owner, it was issued an error. That was, you know, the other staff that was reviewing it back then issued it an error. When the new application came in in 2020, I reviewed it and denied it.
Can I ask something?
We're not done with Ms. Bryson yet.
Just a follow-up. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I'm confused a little bit about what happened in 2019. In all the various documents, I thought I understood, and I may be totally confused, which would be easy to do. I thought there was a license issued in 2019. Ms. Lewis, is that, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon, is that correct or not?
According to the documentation I have from our business license division, there was not an application in 2019 when they submitted a 2020 renewal notice and that is when the town became aware of a change of ownership. And this is going on, the conversation I had with the business license staff.
Okay. Yeah, that was where my confusion was, was because a renewal was sent and then it sounded like there was one in 2019. So are you saying that you're understanding from business license office at the town of Hilton Head that there was a previous owner who was sent the renewal license? Is that correct?
I'm not sure exactly if that's correct. What I'll say is that when the business license division was notified in March of 2020 that they were, that there was a new owner, that is when this process and communication started.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Patrera.
All right. Anyone else with a question for Mr. Ryan relating to equitable estoppel? If not, I'll go to my next question. In September 2019, the appellant entered into a commercial operating agreement with Beaufort County and leased what we've been, we've learned is a county-owned building at the county's airport. The agreement, which was attached, attachment D in the appeal, in the second whereas clause says the county has the right to permit use of the airport under the terms and conditions set forth, full power and authority to enter into this agreement. Under section, article two, uses and privileges, the county hereby grants to the operator, subject to all the terms and conditions of this agreement, following rights, uses, activities, and services. Aerial helicopter tours, helicopter charter, helicopter flight chaining, and virtual reality arcade. Could you explain to the board or help us understand how this granting of permission by the county on property it owns applies in this case before the BCA?
Certainly. The board is welcome to use the operational agreement as any type of persuasive evidence that it deems appropriate, but is not bound by it. The county in this case was not acting as any of the roles that are business licenses that the town does or zoning or land management issues. It's really just an agreement between a landlord and a tenant. And you're certainly not bound by it as it relates to zoning or landloose issues for town ordinances.
Well, it'd be fair to say that the county did not have the power to grant a use that was in conflict with the LMO?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, point of information?
Ms. Haley, did we lose the chair? There he is.
Did I, was I muted? I'm sorry.
Something happened to you briefly, Jerry. You totally disappeared, but I think that Mr. Ryan was trying to give you some additional, or give the board some additional information.
Okay, and I think we got that. I asked the question about, okay, we'll move on then. So questions?
Point of information. After answering your question, I wanted to address a brief issue that's come up a few times today, if I may.
Go ahead.
As we've seen in some of these issues with the different types of vehicles or previous meetings about nano breweries, we're going to have issues that are not specifically addressed in any of the ordinances or codes. When that happens, the burden is on the board to engage what's called interpreting the legislative intention. What was the legislative body attempting to do when they pass this ordinance? And then try and apply that specific issue before the board to the applicable ordinance. That's just been a point of issue that's come up several times, so I wanted to make sure. Even when something's not specifically outlined in the ordinance, and it's certainly going to continue to happen, only the difficult cases make it to you. The duty now becomes one of trying to interpret the legislative intent in passing the ordinance as is. Then that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, now we'll go to the board for questions of either Mr. Ryan or Nicole Dixon, starting with Dr. Ponder.
I'd like to return to the agreement made with Beaufort County. They certainly have the authority to enter into the agreement. Are you saying, Mr. Ryan, that they do not have the authority to supersede anything outlined or spelled out in the LMO?
In this particular case, no, they can't. I'm reluctant to make a broad statement, but no, in this case, they can't dictate to the town our land management ordinances or zoning issues that the town makes.
So how does that affect the, how does that affect this agreement? And how does it affect the force of the agreement? If there's something in there from something written in there that simply isn't applicable, which shouldn't be there?
The operational agreement?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. How does it affect that? Does it make the agreement null in some ways? Does it, does it not matter what happens when they do that? If they don't have the authority to do something that they clearly have done, what does that mean really?
This means that they have permission from the county to engage in that activity, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they have a permission from the town to engage in that activity. This is just an operational agreement between a property owner and a tenant. I can rent out a property and agree to have you run a liquor store, but if that's across the street from the high school, you're going to be prohibited by a separate ordinance. It doesn't, we may have an agreement and I might not have a problem with it, but it doesn't necessarily supersede anything else. And in this case, this is just a landlord-tenant agreement, even though it's between the county, which is another government body, but it's really more equitable to just a private contract between two parties.
Okay. And one question for Ms. Dixon. When you were making this decision, you just said a little while ago that that, you know what, it's been answered. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lautermilch, any questions for staff?
I'm struggling, I guess, to understand why staff would not determine that the primary business here is that of operating helicopter tours. You know, we've heard testimony as to the revenue breakdown. We've heard testimony as to the fact, apparently, that there are four stations, gaming stations, within the facility that four people can enjoy the virtual tours at a time. I've also looked at the company website. The face page of the website mentions absolutely nothing other than helicopter tours. You do need to drill into some of the specific sub-pages. I'm just really curious to understand staff's thinking in not classifying this as a helicopter tour operation.
Well, they're two separate uses, and they had to get two separate business licenses. And there's actually a separate website just for the virtual reality part of their business. So if you go to atomicvrhhi.com, it's all about just the virtual reality part of their business. So staff has to review the two different licenses separately. This is a primary use of the property, and it is classified as an indoor commercial recreation use. It meets those examples as that type of use. Staff does not view it as ancillary to the helicopter ride use.
Not being argumentative, but trying again to follow through this thought. I heard that there is one legal business entity. Why, in fact, or what determines that this business needs two separate business licenses?
That part of it I cannot answer because I don't handle the actual intake and review of the business license permits. We just review it from the zoning standpoint. So why it requires two separate, I'm not sure. But it's two separate businesses. It's two primary uses of the property.
Thank you.
Mr. White, any questions for staff?
I was, I'm confused by that last statement. Is there one license or is there two? It's listed under, the business name is Hilton Head Helicopters LLC.
From the conversation I had with our business license division, prior to Mr. Fath submitting his license application in 2020, the previous owner had two separate business licenses for that property, one for the helicopter and one for the virtual reality gaming. I'm not sure when Mr. Fath submitted his application in 2020, if he submitted two separate applications or not. That I'm not clear on, and maybe he can answer that question. But what I do know is that previously, there were two separate business licenses for these two separate uses, and staff aired in their approval of that back in 2015. And it is not staff's protocol to, just because something was issued an error in the past, to go ahead and reissue that same error, you know, to act on that same error. So I reviewed a new license in 2020 and denied the application.
Can the applicant tell the board whether you submitted for 2021 or two business license applications?
In 2020, we actually submitted two due to prior, and I do have business license. I purchased the business in August of last year, and I do have a business license here. We renewed it in August. It's actually August 19, 2019. It's business license number 23035, issued for Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, DBA Atomic VR. And just a few months prior to that, we had to do the one for, in 7/29/2019, we renewed the business license for Hilton Head Helicopters LLC, business license 17565. And then in 2020, we did submit for two because previously, they did require us to apply for two businesses, business licenses. But again, it is just one business with one EIN number, and I am not sure why they required us to have two in 2019, but that's the reason why we applied for two separate ones in 2020.
Mr. Cretier, I could see that you're talking, but you're muted.
You saw my lips moving, but that was it. Mr. White, you still have the floor for any questions.
So you consider, so what you just said was that you applied for two licenses because that was the way it was set up before?
That's correct. When I took over the business, we actually applied for a new business license just to make sure everything was on the up and up, and that's why it's dated August 19, 2019 for the business license for the VR.
So your operating process is one business? It's running through the same accounting?
Right. Yep, one business.
Mr. Chairman, as long as I have the floor, can I ask you another question?
You've got the floor.
Initially, you indicated that the virtual reality business was about 10% of your overall revenue stream. And I had the impression at the time that it was just an incidental course of business to do the virtual reality of the helicopter. And it appears now that there are multiple games and multiple processes. Is that true? Or is it primarily just truly an incidental activity waiting for their helicopter tour?
So what Nicole said, birthday parties, is actually, we do the helicopter. We do do events with the helicopter. It's not its own individual, people don't, like I said, it's not just for people to come for the VR. It's more for the people that do the helicopter. That actually, Atomic VR website, it's not its own website. We don't have it like that. We have everything linked on one VR, on one big website as under one business. It does not, the VR is not its own business. It's the helicopter. It's a major, that's our business, you know? That's our one that we want people to come. And the VR is just more like a bonus. That's what it is.
So the activity around birthday parties is for what purpose?
For the helicopter. We try to do bigger groups on the helicopter. We only have one helicopter, so people have to wait. So we have a group of six. Three people have to wait so we can get them to do the virtual reality. It's not for the, does that make sense? It's not for the VR, it's more for the helicopter. So we can do, we can bring a larger group for the helicopter, not for the VR.
I see. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Bryson.
Yes, I guess I'll go back to, I think we were asking staff questions, and I appreciate the applicant being asked at the same time. It helps move things along. But my question is, Ms. Dixon, do you know how long the previous owner operated the business there, and did they include this virtual activity as well?
From the information I have from our business license division, the Hilton Head Helicopters LLC was owned and operated at that location since 2015. They did have two separate licenses, and like I mentioned earlier, the license was issued an error back in 2015.
Okay.
For the virtual reality component of it.
Okay. All right. So that's been going on, whether or not it was issued an error since 2015, both activities?
Correct.
But I think I'll wait for the applicants or the panel to ask them any other questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Correct. Correct. Mr. Walzak?
Yeah, the only thing I have is to have our attorney redefine what he said earlier about interpreting what the original authors of the LMO had intended to write, and we have to interpret. Can you explain that again?
The issue is, does this virtual reality game setup that they have at this business constitute one of the prohibited activities that would occur for this type of zoning issue? So there's a need to make a factual determination. Is this an arcade, or is this a, that would be a prohibited indoor recreational activity? Or is this a business that is allowed under the LMO if this is in an industrial light area, I believe it's zoned as? So it becomes a factual determination. Is this arcade a primary, is this exceeding the scope or permitted activities of the LMO? Arcades are, excuse me?
No, I'm just saying, you mentioned earlier that in the original writing of the LMO, the way it was advised, that we should make a determination as to how they thought in their thought process. In other words, perhaps they didn't consider the fact that this could be allowed there. So, you know, how can we make a determination on what their intent was?
Based on everything that you heard today, does this sound like the type of activity that they were trying to prevent from occurring in this area?
Did they think about this type of activity in that area? How do we know that? They may not have even thought about it.
And they certainly might not have. So, and that becomes an issue of, if this was not one of the type of, if this issue had been put before them while they were passing that section of the LMO, how would they have addressed the issue then? And there's no way to have any certainty to that issue.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That clarifies it to some extent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you done, Charlie? Dr. Ponder?
I just want to follow up because I think that what you're telling us now about legislative intent is quite important, not just for today, but for our entire service here. How, would they, would there be some thought in their intent? You say, when they were actually coming up with this section of the LMO, would this have been an activity that they were trying to prescribe or include, and one or the other, right? Do you think that the idea of how much of this activity might happen in this area could be a factor, right? Well, you know, it's only a small portion of what they're doing. Or is it just, is it black and white, like yes or no? Or could there be some gray area here? If they were sitting, considering it? Because I agree with Mr. Walzak that there are going to be a lot of things that would be difficult for us to determine simply because they didn't exist at the time the LMO was being written, right? I mean, mox were not, probably not there. I mean, I don't know whether they were or not, but they're going to be, like the microbreweries, like other things, things that simply did not exist when the LMO was written. And so I'm wondering how much gray area we should be considering? Or whether, you know, is it just black or white? I don't know that it is.
I don't know if there is really a black or white matter. What I could suggest is that staff provided several examples of activities that are not prohibited, or that are prohibited, that constitute indoor recreational activities. I would, what the board can do is try and interpret to see if what you've been told today about the virtual reality games that are at this location, do they fall, are they similar enough to the listed prohibited activities that it should be prohibited? Or can you make a significant distinction to say that's apples and oranges? If that provides any type of guidance. This is a fact-finding issue that the board has to engage in, and there is no mathematical, cut-and-dry formula that I can provide.
Right. I agree. Mr. Chairman, may I have a follow-up question?
You may have as many as you like.
So my question then is for Ms. Dixon. Following up on Ms. Loudermilk's question, which I also had as a question in my mind, this idea of the word primary or principal, which I think might be misused in this case. And if your decision is somehow based on that, the use of that word, I'd like you to explain a bit more because primary or principal would mean that the actual property is being used primarily or principally for this activity, which we now know it is not. And if we're supposed to be interpreting gray area, I then find myself wondering, why are there two business licenses here? Why is there such confusion? And so I'd like to understand from you how the words primary and principal have gone into your thinking and your decision-making about this case.
Well, when I initially reviewed the application, it came in as a separate business license. It came in as a separate use. And I'm tasked with looking at the LMO, looking at the definitions, looking at the use classifications, and it was clearly identified as an indoor commercial recreation use. I mean, it specifically lists an example of an arcade game, and that's exactly what this use is. So it's not, you know, I wouldn't look at it and say, well, you know, 75% of the property is helicopter, they're only doing 25% indoor commercial recreation, so yeah, I'll let it slide. The use itself, no matter the percentage of it, it's not allowed in that zoning district. So even if their application came in saying that they were only doing 10%, I still wouldn't be able to approve it. And it's not listed as an incidental use for aviation services as Mr. McNeil intended.
Okay. So what I want to suggest is that your use of the words primary and principal probably shouldn't have occurred, and that what I think you meant was standalone, but you've been saying primary and principal, which I don't think is helping the argument.
Thank you for pointing that out. The reason why I was leaning towards that is because when the applicant was talking about the majority of their use was helicopter, and that this was only like an add-on or accessory, that's why I was pointing out that this is another standalone use, and you're right, I was using the wrong terminology.
Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board members with a question or the staff before we go to the appellant's rebuttal? Hearing none, Mr. McNeil, you have a five-minute period for rebuttal if you'd care to make any further comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've heard a lot during the staff's presentation. Let me try to recap that, and I think the best way, I've learned a few things I didn't know, which I think helped the appellant's case. Maybe in the framework of the equitable estoppel principles, they were saying, was there a reasonable reliance? In this case, we've heard that in 2015, the town issued a business license for the virtual reality portion of the business. Apparently, the staff didn't review it, or if they did, they didn't find a problem. I wasn't entirely clear, but I'm assuming that use was renewed over a period of a few years, 2016, 17, 18. But then, as Mr. Fath stated, when he came in in 2019, they sought to renew the business license. The they sought to renew the business license after his interest in the company was acquired. Now, the company itself didn't change names. He acquired the interest of the owner of the LLC, so it's still Helicopters LLC. He purchased the managing membership. Again, in 2019, an employee from the town's business department came out, approved the use. Apparently, the staff either didn't review it, or if they did review it, they approved it. So you get to the question of reasonable reliance and prejudicial change, and that's where the real harm here is. These folks have tried to do what's right and follow the procedures. They've been led down per most paths, so to say, to believe that it was, what they were doing was appropriate, proper, and had been condoned by the town. And as you see from the materials we submitted, they did expend a substantial sum of money in purchasing new equipment and staffing, marketing, et cetera. So I have a hard time understanding whether it should be penalized in this instance. I'm not entirely clear on what the best resolution is, but I think maybe what we're talking about is a limited or a conditional exception of some kind in this instance, understood that this does not, the town would not want this to be considered to be an approval of this use in the IL district, but under our exceptional circumstances, we think there should be an exception made for them to allow, for them to be allowed to continue this use in light of the facts that have been presented here today. Give the remainder of my time over to Mariana and Chad if they want to add something else.
Something that I do want to make it clear, it's only four stations. This is not... When we started virtual reality, I was here in 2015. When we started virtual reality, I want to make that something, we were doing it just kind of like an experience to add on, and actually, the town called Lori Center, the one, our old owners, and told them that they needed a two-business license, because it was two different activities. And that's when the town, I think I gave Douglas the email saying that they needed a personal business license for the atomic VR, and that's when we started doing the Hilton Head helicopter DVA atomic VR. So we actually got a call from the town saying, for you to do virtual reality in this building, you have to have a separate business license. So the town knew when they called us what was happening. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions from the board or the appellant in their rebuttal. Mr. Walzak?
No, no, thank you.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. A question. I apologize, Mariana. We only see your first name. I usually call you by your last name in respect, but I don't see your last name, so apologize for that. But I think I just understood your testimony, that you've been there since 2015, and that there were these virtual stations. How many were there in 2015, and were any added in 2019 or 2020? Oh, sorry, you're muted.
So four stations. So four stations. We always have four stations. We have not added, we just upgraded our system to a better version. So since 2015, nothing has been added. We kind of have upgraded everything, but nothing has been added.
Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I have no questions.
Ms. Loudermilk?
No, no further questions.
Ms. Ponder?
No further questions.
Okay. I have a... Well, we begin our discussion of the appeal before us. Before we do that, I have a question for Nicole. I was trying to find my rules and regulations, which are here somewhere, but I couldn't find them quickly. The BZA can deal with appeals and variances, and I believe special exceptions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is, given what we've heard today, recognizing that the town would prefer not to have what it sees as a non-approved activity in a zoning district, but given the history of what's gone on here, is this a potential situation for the first time in my five years on the board, that we should look at a special exception?
Unfortunately, in order to look at it as a special exception, it would have to be listed in our use table in Chapter 4 as a use that's allowed by special exception. So this is not a use. Yes, the short answer is no.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have before us this appeal. We've heard from the applicant, the town, and the applicant again. We've asked a lot of questions. Now it's time for some discussion and how we feel. Seems to me that it, one way to look at it is whether this is a, there are two primary businesses, or whether there's one. So we'll start with Mr. Walzak.
Well, the way I view this whole situation is, it seems to me like the applicant was trying to do the right thing, and that along the way, the town kind of made an error along the way with the business license and so on. And they were operating in good faith, and they were investing in their business. And I kind of find it hard to say that we have to deny this. So, I mean, I'd like to hear other takes on this, other than just what I just said. But it just seems that mistakes made by the town, and maybe even the county, who gave them kind of permission but shouldn't reflect on their business. So that's where I am at this point.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. It appears to me as though, and Dr. Ponder, I'll use your terms, principal or primary use is the helicopter rental business, and that the virtual stations are ancillary or incidental use, notwithstanding the evidence shown that there's some marketing about that. As I understood the testimony from the business owners, the birthday parties are part of the helicopter experience, not a separate arcade experience. That's not the purpose of that marketing, for just an arcade experience. So I would want to reverse the decision of the staff and let the business continue, notwithstanding that there are two business licenses required. I think that's a wholly separate issue from the appropriate use in this district. And based on the testimony before us today, it appears to me that the principal use is the helicopter rental business. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I would agree with everybody. I think it's primarily one business with the virtual reality aspect being an incidental use. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Loudermilk?
Yes, I agree 100% with what Ms. Bryson and the others have said. I think we've got one business here with a primary operation of the helicopter tours, and an incidental operation of an accessory, you know, business to occupy people primarily while they're waiting for the helicopter tours, and to educate them a little bit about what they're going to see and experience on the tour. So that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Ponder?
First of all, I want to commend the BZA staff, because I think that there have been several, I'll kind of say, missteps made that complicate this situation quite a bit. And I really commend them for not just leaning into that and to say, you know what, just because mistakes were made in the past, we don't have to repeat those mistakes. And they really have done, I think, a commendable job of trying to right the ship, in a way, and rectify the situation. However, in this case, I really think that it would put an undue burden on the business owner. And so I have to agree with my colleagues here and think that we need to reverse.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members with anything they'd like to say before I ask for a motion? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion. What we have before us is an appeal that denies the ability to use the virtual reality within this particular district. And so a motion can either be to sustain the town's, uphold the town's determination, or to reverse. So I'll call for a motion. Would anyone care to make that motion? Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. Ms. Haley, do you have your typing fingers ready? I'm sure she does.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I move to reverse the decision/interpretation because staff made an error in determining whether a requirement of the land management ordinance was met. And, I'm sorry, Ms. Haley, I'm using the template. For the reason that the helicopter tour business is the primary or principal use on this property within the light industrial district, and the virtual experiences, as described in the testimony today, are incidental or ancillary to that primary or principal use. And so the helicopter rental business is allowed within the zoning district, along with this ancillary or incidental use.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Bryson, second by Loudermilk, to reverse the town's determination. Any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walzak?
In favor of the motion.
Mr. Katrier?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
I believe the motion carries and the determination is reversed. Mr. McNeil, and folks at the helicopter place, thank you for coming before us. We'll move forward here.
Thank you all for considering this difficult set of facts and the long-term development of this business here. Appreciate it.
Well, that's why these people get paid the huge bucks that we do.
I understand.
Next item on the agenda is the staff report. Ms. Bryson had asked for a waiver-approval summary from 2017 to present. That was circulated as part of the agenda. Is there any discussion of that? Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. Recognizing our hour, I'll be brief. Recognizing our hour, I'll try to be brief. And is Ms. Lewick present, I hope?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. It appears as though I totaled 31 waivers allowed since 2017 through this portion of 2020, and there were only two in 2017, so I don't know whether that's based on the records that were accessible, or that there were only two. But based upon the numbers and types of waivers, including some being multiple waivers, I would request that the Board of Zoning Appeals consider sending this report to the Planning Commission for their review to determine if any amendment should be made to the LMO due to the number of waivers granted by staff. And I would so move.
We have a motion to send the report to the Planning Commission with the request that they review and determine whether any further amendments to the LMO might be appropriate. Do we have a second for that motion? I believe I saw Dr. Ponder's hand go up. Motion by Bryson, second by Ponder. Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. Walzak?
In favor of the motion.
Mr. Katrier?
For the motion. Teresa, I'm going to ask you, I'm leaving town first thing tomorrow to go to Atlanta for my son, grandson's high school graduation, and I'm leaving town a couple of days later. Could you draft a letter for me that would carry out the intent of this motion, and I'd be glad to sign it first next week?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item is the review of the current waiver report that was presented to us in the board packet. Is there any discussion relating to that? Hearing none. We're almost ready to adjourn. Four and a half hours today.
Mr. Katrier, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Nicole. You mentioned that you'll be out of town. Are you going to be able to come in and sign the notice of action in the timeframe that's required?
I can do it either, I was going to call Teresa after this call, but I'll go ahead and tell you now. I can do it either this afternoon or Monday afternoon.
Okay. I think Monday afternoon would work. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, for those of us who also have to go and give a signature, when does the staff want us to come?
Yep, that was going to be my next question, but thank you for that. Teresa, can you talk to us about the logistics of executing and remind us who needs to come and sign?
Sure.
We have drop boxes out front of Town Hall. Rather than having to, you know, communicate with staff, when you think that you'd be invited to sign, what we can do is, once it's ready, we can let you all know, and put it in one of the boxes out front, and just have you stop by at your leisure and sign it, if that works for you all.
That's fine. What's the deadline for completing the notices of action?
It's five business days.
So this is, what, Wednesday? Yep, all day long, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay, so we need all, the parties who need to sign, need to sign by next Wednesday. And you will email us telling us when they're ready.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
We have three notices of action. I assume they'll all be ready at the same time, or not?
Yes, we'll make sure that they're all ready at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with anything to come before the board? Anyone else with anything to come before the board? A marathon session. Thank you all for your patience and...
Good job, Mr. Chair.
One item. I just have a question. When will our next meeting be held?
Thank you. We do have two items for the August 31st meeting. One has requested a postponement, which I have granted. And the other, unless they do something different, will be heard. So as of today, we have a meeting at 9:00 on August 31st, whatever day of the week that is. I believe it's a Monday. And just so the board knows, when someone requests a postponement, what has been happening is the staff emails me and tells me, explains what the issue is and why they're asking for a postponement. And then I send back an email, if I deem it appropriate, that grants a postponement of up to three months, as permitted under the rules and procedures, from the date of the meeting at which it would have appeared on the agenda. So this next one coming up is sort of in limbo right now until it appears on the agenda for August 31st. And then they will have three months, September, October, November, to appear before the BZA. So that's the process we've been following that I think is in compliance with our amended rules or procedures. If there's nothing else, then we stand adjourned. Thank you so much.